Okay, thank you everybody for being here. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Trustees to order. But not everybody's going to read that.
Right, and open session people may not understand that. You might say for the meeting for the public begins at 8 or something. I don't know. You have to break it down to third grade level.
We'll make it clear. We'll make sure to contact the media about that. But so our first action item tonight will be a resolution to go into executive session.
Yes, this is Resolution 2013-036. A resolution authorizing executive session at tonight's meeting of the Board of Trustees.
May I move?
Second.
Today February 11th. Could we have the roll please?
Yes, thank you. Trustee Bauer.
Do we have our agenda items for the executive session?
Good evening, sorry I'm late.
Thank you. Trustee Davis Ford.
All right, got it here. Just before we do that. So there is a motion and a second.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Here.
The items to be discussed are: Status of Recreation Operating Manual,
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
President Torpe.
Here.
Notice of this meeting had been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
Village Administrator's Performance Evaluation, Fire Chief Compensation,
In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall on Village website and has been filed in the office of Village clerk.
Chief Finance Officer Employment Agreement,
Official action may be taken at tonight's special meeting.
Update on Personnel Investigation, Special Sewer Assessment, Thank you and thank you everybody for being here. Hopefully trustees Goldberg and Gould will decide to join us one of these weeks. and CFO Contract Alternatives. So those are our executive session items. There was a motion and a second. All in favor? As we decided to change our meeting format a little bit again this year, we decided to do our executive session first.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're going to reconvene into executive session and be back out here at 8 p.m. sharp. So we did not do that the last time because of issues getting quorum, but we will do that tonight. So we're going to go into executive session in a moment and then reconvene back out here at 8 o'clock. So for everybody watching and for those of you that are here, to keep in mind that schedule will change going forward. That even though the meetings do actually begin at 7:30 still, they're noticed for 8 p.m. And that the public portion of the meeting will actually start at 8 p.m. each night or a couple minutes thereafter.
Can I just say one thing about that?
Yep.
The notice in patch talked about the meeting starting at 7:30 and it has to be made clear to the press that the meeting has executive sessions scheduled first from 7:30 to 8. Otherwise, we have people showing up and when we ask people to come or don't come.
Yeah, I'll make sure to reach out to all the local media and let them know. It is on our website for 8 o'clock. Right, and your notices?
7:30 with the first course of action to be executive session with the open session beginning at 8 o'clock or shortly thereafter.
But not everybody's going to read that.
Right, and open session people may not understand that. You might say for the meeting for the public begins at 8 or something. I don't know. You have to break it down to third grade level.
We'll make it clear. We'll make sure to contact the media about that. But so our first action item tonight will be a resolution to go into executive session.
Yes, this is Resolution 2013-036. A resolution authorizing executive session at tonight's meeting of the Board of Trustees.
May I move?
Second.
Do we have our agenda items for the executive session? All right, got it here. Just before we do that. So there is a motion and a second. The items to be discussed are: Status of Recreation Operating Manual, Village Administrator's Performance Evaluation, Fire Chief Compensation, Chief Finance Officer Employment Agreement, Update on Personnel Investigation, Special Sewer Assessment, and CFO Contract Alternatives. So those are our executive session items. There was a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're going to reconvene into executive session and be back out here at 8 p.m. sharp. All right, thank you everybody. I would now like to reconvene the board into our public session. Could we have another roll call please?
Trustee Bauer.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levinson.
Here.
Trustee Rosner.
Sir.
President Torpe.
Here. Thank you. Can everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to our flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing. Okay, a couple announcements before we get started. The first is the South Orange Community Garden. The registration began and the community garden is on Third Street. Has 48 raised beds available on a first come, first served basis. So if you do want to plot a land, you can register at the Barrett Center. It's $70 for the season. And if you want to learn a little bit more about that, you can go to southorange.org/communitygarden. There is also a Board of Trustees Budget Workshop tomorrow night for here in Village Hall at 7:30 p.m. And just a reminder that Village Hall and the municipal offices will be closed Monday, February 18th in observance of President's Day. There is a Board of Trustees Town Hall style meeting, which has been rescheduled to Tuesday, February 26th at 7:30 p.m. At SOPAC to discuss Hurricane Sandy and kind of a recap of some of those neighborhood meetings we've been having. Another reminder that you can make your taxes, sewer payments online. It's very easy to do. Just takes a couple steps, a couple minutes, and you can do so at southorange.org/taxpayment ASP. Electronic recycling dates. Electronic items may be brought to our recycling center on 300 Walton Ave on March 9th. And if you do have any questions about that, about what you can bring or what you can't bring, you can either call DPW at 973-378-7741, extension 221, or you can get the information in the upcoming March-April edition of the Gaslight Newsletter. And actually, that's a good segue. I do want to make sure to thank Public Works for the stellar job they did this weekend cleaning up all the snow. I heard nothing but compliments from residents, you know, pretty much the morning after the snowstorm, even the night of almost. The roads were clear. Emergency vehicles could get around and by Saturday afternoon, you could basically get around town, almost no problem. They did a really, really great job. Allowed everybody to get down to Flood's Hill for all the great sledding that. Allowed everybody to get down to Flood's Hill for all the great sledding that happened over the weekend. So hopefully, everybody had a good, warm weekend with the snow, and we're all pretty lucky and fortunate that we did not have the kind of damage that some of our more sensationalistic news outlets were reporting. But we were, as always, prepared and want to remind people, we did send out a couple notifications, some information on Friday to the folks via Reverse 911 in our emergency alert system. So if you did not get something on Friday from the village, that means you're not signed up in the emergency alert system, which means you need to sign up in the emergency alert system, which you can do at southorange.org/alerts. We did have a presentation scheduled for this evening from the Board of Ed, but I do not see them here, so we can move on from that. And if they do come in, we can ask them, they were going to present their budget, I believe, for the 1314 school year. So again, this is just a special meeting. We have a couple business items to get to, and then we'll get to our conference agenda, which is kind of the main part of the evening. But as always, before we take any action, I do want to open up the meeting for any public comments. So if there's anybody who wishes to speak, if you'd like to come forward, there will still be an opportunity to speak after this as well. Nobody? Did you cross them all? I'm kidding. Okay, well, no one has come to the podium, so I'd like to close public comments and move on to an ordinance for first reading tonight.
Thank you. This is Ordinance 2013-03, an ordinance to amend the code of the Township of South Orange Village, Section 130-49, to provide for special assessments for non-reoccurring costs incurred by the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis or Trustee Levinson, this is something I know you guys have been working a little bit more on. Do you want to give a kind of brief recap to the public?
Yeah. We have currently been assessed from the joint meeting extra charge, extra expenses that is due to the accidental litigation. This is really allowing our ordinance to have one-time charge, both of the two ordinances allow us now to have a one-time charge against the sewer fee.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from any members of the board?
You know, it's a one-time charge. There could be another one-time charge on the same issue. So make sure that's correct.
It depends upon the settlement.
Yes.
Well, it depends upon the settlement.
Yeah, these are the litigation costs associated with that right now.
And the intention of making it a one-time charge is to not incorporate it into the regular assessment, then the litigation goes away, and also we're overbilling people.
Right. So the hope is that this is going to clear up at some point?
Correct.
Okay, if there are no more comments or questions from any members of the board, I'd like to ask for a motion.
I move.
I second.
Okay, moved by Trustee Levinson, seconded by Trustee Rosner. Could we have the roll, please?
Thank you. Trustee Bauer.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Thank you. So Ordinance 2013-03 has passed on first reading. We have a second ordinance tonight for first reading. This is Ordinance 2013-04, an ordinance to authorize a special assessment of twenty-five dollars for each equivalent dwelling unit pursuant to amended Section 130-49, to provide for special assessments for non-reoccurring costs incurred by the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties in defending certain litigation.
Thank you. And this is linked to that other ordinance?
This just makes the statement of the twenty-five dollar special assessment. Our intent is, as well as soon as possible after the second reading, we will be sending out the notices.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion.
I move.
Moved by Trustee Levinson, seconded by Trustee Davis Ford. Could we have the roll, please?
Thank you. Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
And Trustee Bauer.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2013-04 has also passed on first reading.
I move that Ordinance 2013-03 and 2013-04 be set down for a second reading and final passage at the March 11th, 2013, meeting of the Board of Trustees, and that a public hearing be held at that time and that the village clerk be authorized to take necessary action regarding public notice of such hearing.
Okay, there's a motion by Trustee Davis Ford. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Levinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, the next is a declaration. Ms. Klein, could you read that by title?
Thank you. This is the village president's declaration establishing the New Jersey Transit Advisory Committee.
Thank you. And instead of reading through the entire declaration, basically, this came out of the last meeting, which is that considering that we believe that some of the scheduling issues, station maintenance, chimney sustainability, a whole bunch of other issues are going to be ongoing with New Jersey Transit, with the schedules and those discussions kind of being the forefront of that, that it would be wise to create a working group of village officials, residents working together to try and advocate for getting some of these things changed. We've seen a little bit of progress. In our last meeting, they did announce that they were going to be modifying the 619 Midtown Direct Train that would hopefully eliminate five to 10 minutes off that ride. And but we need to do more, and they agreed, we agreed, that that was only the first step. So hopefully, this work group can get together, put our heads together as far as working on press information, publicity, and advocacy to New Jersey Transit, and some of the other officials that are involved in that. So I've heard from a couple residents that do want to be involved. There are, there is a spot for myself, one trustee, five residents, and one member from the village administration. And quickly, Mr. Rother, is there any issue with our committees, the advisory committees, that either the board creates by resolution or I create by declaration? Can we appoint ex officio, non-voting members that don't live in South Orange?
That don't live in South Orange?
Yeah. So for example, if we wanted to have Assemblyman McKean, Assemblywoman J.C., Senator Cody, as, you know, members of this work group, would we be allowed to do that are just kind of more informal than that?
I am, I am not certain of the answer, but, and I'll get back to you, but, you know, on first blush, I don't see why not, if they're purely advisory. But, but I'd like to get back to you.
Okay, that's fine. There's, yeah, there's no rush on that. I do want to have all the members appointed soon. So if there is any member of the public who does want to be involved, hasn't already been in contact with me, send me an email saying, yes, please count me in. Please do so, as there are only five spots, and I think there are more than that of people that so far expressed interest. But I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity, and that can always change in the future, too. If there's an overwhelming outpouring of support and interest, we can always increase that number at some point. But anyway, so by reading, I don't know if, Ms. Klein, you need to read the declarative statement into the record, or if just by reading the title, that's the creation?
I think we need to read the declaration by full.
Oh, by, in full?
In full.
Oh, okay.
So whereas New Jersey Transit services are a critical transportation infrastructure in South Orange, and whereas South Orange was the first designated transit village and has an exceptional history of smart growth and transit-oriented development, and whereas in October of 2012, New Jersey Transit, without notification to the village, readjusted train schedules on the Midtown Direct Line, resulting in a reduction of service for South Orange train station commuters. And whereas the South Orange train station is approximately the ninth busiest train station on New Jersey Transit's line, with nearly 4,000 riders a day from South Orange, West Orange, and Livingston. And whereas the continued progress of restoring adequate train service, along with sustainable transit-oriented development, continued improved station maintenance and enhancement, and other ongoing long-term transit-oriented issues are important to our community. And whereas residents and community partners play a valuable role in assisting the village in its efforts to create policy and advocate to organizations like New Jersey Transit. Now therefore be it declared by the reading of this declaration into the record on this 11th day of February 2013, that the village president of the Township of South Orange Village hereby establishes the New Jersey Transit Advisory Committee for the purpose of advising and assisting the village in continuing to make progress in restoring adequate train service on the Midtown Direct Train Line, along with advocating for continued sustainable transit-oriented development, improving station maintenance and enhancement, and other ongoing long-term transit-oriented issues. And be it further declared that the New Jersey Transit Advisory Committee shall initially be comprised of no more than eight total members to be appointed by the village president, each to serve a one-year term as follows, in addition to advisement of any ex officio, non-South Orange members. Members shall be the village president, or his or her designee, to serve as the interim chair and a permanent member, one trustee liaison, five South Orange residents, and one representative from village administration.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one question about, do we, Steve, do we have to notice any meetings by that group?
Should.
Okay.
I have volunteered Alex to be the trustee liaison.
Okay, so, yeah, Mark's, Trustee Rosner's been doing that, involved with this for a while, so that does make sense. And obviously, if they're, especially if they're noticed, anybody can come to the meeting. And we can always adjust that membership if we do need to.
What, how many members are there?
Eight total. Myself, a member of the administration, one trustee, and five residents.
I have an answer to your earlier question. The administrative code provides that the advisory committees have to be either residents or owners of businesses in the community.
Okay.
But by the same token, if they're not in the committee, it doesn't mean we can't invite them to come to the meetings.
That's right. All right, we still want them to be involved as well.
We know McKean and J.C.'s office have both said they want to be invited to any.
J.C.'s a resident.
That's right. Okay, so that's that. That was the last item of business for the special meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Trustee Bauer.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Rosner, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Special meeting is adjourned. At this time, I would like to call the conference agenda meeting to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Trustee Bauer.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Here.
Trustee Levinson. Trustee Rosner.
Here.
President Torpe.
Here.
Thank you. Adequate notice of this meeting had been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on our village website, and has been filed in the office of the village clerk. Official action may not be taken at tonight's conference agenda meeting.
Thank you. So again, just as a reminder to everybody, we're going back to the regular conference format, so now this part of the meeting is the work session part of the meeting. We're going to do the updates from myself and the administrator, the committees, any discussion items that we have. And ideally, some of the items that come up through discussion today will be added for action in the next regular meeting to give us a little bit better of a flow from our work session meetings to the regular meetings. I'll start with my report. I do have a number of things that I'm going to try and keep quick. I feel like I always say that and never meet it. The New Jersey Transit Work Group, we already talked about that. Again, if people are interested, please let me know. And hopefully, we'll get that group together in the next week or two to talk about what the next steps are. Sort of post-Hurricane Sandy recap progress, things like that. We've had all the Neighborhood Association meetings. There were five of them. I do want to do one more push of the surveys that we've created. People haven't seen the survey. You can get them from southorange.org. And we have gotten almost 100 back, but I would like, I would like to double that. So we're going to contact all the Neighborhood Associations that we met with and ask each of them to send out to their networks the survey as well. It's a good way for us to get some more quantitative information about what happened, and the neighborhood meetings were a great way to get a little bit more qualitative information, hearing some of the stories people had about the storm. But it's also helping us, because when you put your survey in, put your address, it's helping us kind of geolocate where some of the problems may be. So for example, people were complaining that, you know, their particular area in town always lost power, and we're starting to get a little bit better of a sense of where in town those are, what areas in town have, you know, there's two houses that are on a circuit connected to another town. And so we're starting to get a better idea of that. The surveys are definitely helpful. Neighborhood meetings were really great. And all of us, I think, we all attended, trustees attended at least one of them each, and I attended all of them with our chair of our Citizens Public Safety Committee. And we really thank the Neighborhood Association meetings and the people who, you know, brought us into their homes to have those meetings. They were very, very helpful, I think. We got some good feedback, some good ideas. And we've already started to move on some of them, like creating tree inventories, using some of the information that residents have and things like that. On that same note, also started to apply for a couple grants. We have our disaster relief money from FEMA that's going along well. And then there are a couple other smaller grants that come along with this that I'm not sure if we've applied for before. One is a very small grant, and that is basically compensates the municipal government that goes through a storm that was an official state of emergency, you know, declared disaster. And it takes a percentage of time that the federal government thinks that you spent, that your, you know, for example, police chief and fire chief as OEM coordinator spent on that storm, and, and basically compensates you, reimburses you for that percentage of their salary. So if they spent 10% of their time dealing with the storm, they take 10% of those salaries and give it back to the town, basically saying because of that time they were spent dealing with a statewide or region-wide or national emergency, that's not really fair for us to be paying for that. So it's a very small amount of money, but it always does help. And the other is some grants that will help us pay for backup generation power at some of our buildings, and to help us construct a shelter and emergency operations center that could possibly be paired with another project where the rescue squad building is being relocated. So those details are still very preliminary, but there are, does seem to be, there are a number of grant opportunities available for this. And I'm working with the state police and the county office of emergency management to go through that process. One of those grants was already turned in that I sent out to everybody maybe two weeks ago, and the other one we're still working on. Switching gears a little bit, something that I've talked about in a lot of my updates is budget transparency, and what we want to do to even improve what we've already been doing. And this year, what we're going to do is launch a tool that is pretty neat. It is a tool that is created by a company called Delphi Solutions, and they basically take four, or five, or six years, whatever amount of budget data you can provide them, and they plug it into this website that visualizes your five-year budget in really beautiful charts and graphs and trend lines, so you can see what your budget is from year to year. And what we actually realized through having the discussions with the administrator, myself, our Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, and the folks from this company, is that there's actually a huge benefit to us using this tool internally for our department heads. You know, we have finance software that, my understanding is, is not particularly flexible or easy to use, printing reports and generating things like that. You can only do it right one year at a time. So there's a whole bunch of those limitations. And what we realized was that this tool that originally was conceived for budget transparency to the public may actually be a tool, will actually be a tool, that our department heads might be able to use to actually help them do their budgets more efficiently. So we kind of, that kind of got pivoted a little bit into, well, this is actually going to be a tool that's going to help us budget internally, with the added benefit that it's also going to make our budget much more transparent, because although we put the spreadsheet out last year, which was a great step, by putting the data in that format, we can now plug it into this system, and you can visualize everything online. You can look them up. Their first town that they did it in was Palo Alto in California. And you can see, they've gotten a lot of accolades out there for being, you know, very transparent with their budget in California. Municipal budget's very different than New Jersey. But I think that's a great step. We're able to get about a 20% discount on the software itself. There really isn't anything else like it out there. You know, it's in around the $3,000 range, so, you know, far below bidding thresholds or anything like that. Not to mention, I don't think there would be anybody else that could even really respond if we did put out bids. And so basically, we're looking at getting them that data and basically putting all that information online. People will be able to see a ton of information really easily accessible about our budget. And hopefully, that will improve our workflows going forward. And do want to make, changing gears a little bit again, want to make a couple updates on some events, presentations that I went to and did. One was a Sustainable Jersey event, where it talked about the, on behalf of the village, the electric vehicle chargers that Sustainable Jersey granted to us. Folks, remember, we got a $10,000 grant to install three EV chargers downtown, and basically to talk about how those EV chargers are part of a broader construct of how we, as a town, you know, are keep leveraging over and over again all these different sustainable energy-saving initiatives. So talked about that down there, and it was, you know, very well received by the people attending the panel. You know, it was really great publicity for South Orange and all the different things that we're working on, most of which are coming from the residents on the Environmental Commission and Energy Policy Committee. on the environmental commission and energy policy committee and places like that. And through that, met a handful of people that are interested in proposing some different new energy savings ideas, so they've sent some follow-up emails, and hopefully we'll follow up with them and talk a little bit more about those. But going to those events is always great for the village, to get to network and meet people who might be able to offer something, and in a couple cases, it looks like that may be possible. There's also a New Jersey Conference of Mayors event down in Trenton, we talked about shared services, the 2% tax cap, and talked a lot about utility, utility companies, and sort of follow-up from Hurricane Sandy, a topic that somehow I'm still not tired about talking about, but there's a lot of work that we still need to do there. So there were some members from the state government, you know, dozens of other mayors there, we basically got to talk about some of these different initiatives, some of the legislation that's coming down the pipeline as well. Just a couple more things. Another is, I've started to discuss with the Essex County Office of Emergency Management and the county administration, basically doing some sort of pilot program, which I sort of semi-announced a few months ago about finding a way to keep track of power outages better, and that we need to kind of set an example for what utility companies could be doing, and Essex County has been very forward-thinking about wanting to use the best possible technology software that's out there, so looking at cloud-based spreadsheets that would allow municipal OEMs to report directly to the county in real live, real-time spreadsheets, you know, all the power outages that are happening, whether they're critical or not, and then in real time to have people be able to update those. So right now, most of those outages are reported by phone, by email, and even fax, and this would consolidate all of that and reduce the amount of data entry. So right now, some of the problems, there's a lot of problems with the way power outages are managed during these large storms, but when the town sends it to the county, and the county sends it to the utility company, and utility company back to the county, and back to the town, each of those points, because the systems are not integrated, each of those points is another set of data entry. So each time you enter that data, not only are you spending time doing it, but there's always going to be errors that are made, and, and it's a gross, grossly inefficient use of people's time. So we're looking at modernizing some of that, and again, I can't stress how great Essex County has been about wanting to use the best possible solution out there, so we've been starting to talk about that a little bit more. On a similar note, something we've brought up before, and I don't know, trustee Levitsen, if you're going to bring up more of these during the finance, but one of the cloud technologies that we have been talking about for a while has begun to be rolled out, which is Google Apps. There've been a couple hiccups, as kind of expected, with switching over an infrastructure like this, but it's going in a good direction, and by the time we're done with it, we'll be able to utilize Google Calendar, Google Docs, all these different great features, and we've improved our network redundancy and security here in Village Hall a lot by splitting off our email from our internal network here in Village Hall. And one last thing that I'm going to ask one of our guests to speak about in a second is CERT. The Community Emergency Response Team has been a program that I've been involved in for a couple years before, before I was elected, and I've been really, really lucky enough to be able to kind of hand it off to someone who has an incredible amount of OEM experience, and we want to try and build this program even more. CERT played a really valuable role during Hurricane Sandy. It was the first time since I've been here, and I think many of the years before, that CERT was activated and used during the storm. There was a larger program, maybe five to 10 years ago, and it kind of waxes and wanes as volunteers come and go, but what we really want to do is set the program up, make it sustainable, do more outreach. We're working very closely with Seton Hall, has been a great partner in this, and so there's a couple things that the board needs to do in our next meeting, which is to basically ratify or support the charter and the standard operating procedures that will encapsulate CERT. So we do have our CERT coordinator here. Andrew, if you want to come up and just talk for a couple minutes about your experience with this, introduce, you know, a little bit of what you want to do with CERT to the board and to the public.
Thank you. Is this working?
Yeah, just make sure you're.
Walk right into it.
Okay, all right. Well, I want to thank you very much for inviting me to speak to the board of trustees. My name's Andrew Boyarsky, and I'm chairperson of the Community Emergency Response Team here in South Orange. I had the pleasure of actually going through my class with trustee Davis Ford, who sat right next to me during class, making sure that I attended the things. During my day job, I am a project director for, at the CUNY School of Professional Studies at the City University of New York, and what I do is, I do emergency preparedness training for the city of New York and for the region as a whole. And that runs the gamut from emergency sheltering to logistics to family assistance centers in the event of mass casualty events and things of that nature. What we want to do here is we want to expand and build on the Community Emergency Response Team. We've worked very closely with Alex during the responses, and fortunately, we've had, I think, far too many, and I'm a recent resident, or, or, let's say transplant, to South Orange from Brooklyn. And so, you know, we've seen a number of events, the first one was when we actually moved in and experienced that snowmageddon that we had at that time. We have about 12 volunteers, we want to build that out, we want to build a committed group that can respond to take the onus off of emergency responders. We're not there as a substitute, we're there as an extra pair of hands. You know, the specifics of what we do is, is not critical stuff, it's support roles, emergency sheltering being one of them, others being medical triage, light search and rescue, psychological first aid, or disaster mental health, fire suppression on a low level, things of that nature. So that's, that's my, that's what I came to present on. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them in regard to what CERT does and what sort of role we intend to play here.
Can I ask you one question? How many of the members are from Seton Hall versus residents of the 12?
We have 12 residents that are non-Seton Hall students. In addition, so there is a CERT organization at Seton Hall, it's run by Tom Giordano, and I should also mention, Tom Giordano has been a great partner and great supporter of us. He's helped to provide a lot of guidance and a lot of direct support. So during Sandy, he brought over about 50 of their COTS, just so that we had them in reserve in case we needed to use them. We coordinate very closely with Seton Hall, since they're an intrinsic part of the community.
I understand that you may have an additional group of people who are interested in joining as a result of our neighborhood visits to get feedback from Sandy, am I right, Alex?
Yeah, when, when we went around to all the neighborhood associations, we did ask if people wanted to volunteer. We got 30 or 40 people who did check off they wanted to volunteer, there's always going to be a little bit of a drop-off, but hopefully, we're going to try and get as many of those people into the next CERT training as possible.
Okay, so that information will be eventually sent to you.
Yeah, was the question, do you know when the next class is going to be? And where?
We're waiting to get the schedule from Essex County OEM, and when we do, we're going to distribute that, and we will reach out to those people that have indicated that they want to volunteer. Just the one thing that I do want to mention is, we will create two sets of volunteers, those that want to be actively involved, what we will call our core volunteers, and those who will be sort of more auxiliary volunteers, those that will support us perhaps not on a regular basis, but when they're called on or when they're needed, and also for those who, one thing I want to be clear of is, we're open to volunteers regardless of.
Time commitment, right?
Excuse me, regardless of the time commitment, so if there's a, if there's work that they can do, that's one thing, but also based on ability. So, you know, we live in a diverse community, we want people with all kinds of abilities who can come to the table and provide that support, and we want to be representative of the community as a whole.
And I think if there's, you know, there's, I mean, so many lessons from, you know, disaster preparedness, but one of them is always that you can always find something for someone to do.
Yes, yeah.
Even if someone doesn't necessarily want to go out and respond and, you know, help direct traffic in the middle of the snowstorm, or staff a shelter overnight, there's logistical things that need to be done, there's always things, so if anybody is interested, you know, I wouldn't, I would ask that, nobody say, oh, well, I don't think this is for me. If you think it could possibly in any way be for you, reach out to Andrew or myself, or any of the CERT members asked, learn a little bit more about what it is. There's always a way to find something for that person to do, as well as the 20-hour training, which is usually done over four, four days, is just really valuable stuff to learn. You learn some, some skills.
That'll help your family.
That you can use to help yourself and your family during a really large-scale disaster. So it's just good stuff to know.
Yep, yep. And just to piggyback on what you said, simple thing, a person who doesn't want to do any of the other things that identify, one of the things we found out in this last storm was that people who we could not communicate with via internet, telephone, or whatever, then the old basic walk and drop off flyers was really important. So someone who has skills, who can design a flyer and help print it out, and then be a part of a group who takes a block and distributes flyers door by door would be, you know, just something that, that one could do. So again, that's an example of something very simple, that someone who had limited interest or skill could still be, be very, very helpful in this scenario.
And just as a sort of highlight of things that will be upcoming, we're planning on doing an exercise, probably rescheduling that to sometime in March at this point, so we can get a larger group that'll be involved. As Alex pointed out, we talked about there'll be some trainings coming up, we're going to run an emergency shelter training again in the spring, and probably again in the fall, and we're looking to coordinate our work also closely with the neighboring CERT organizations as well, and of course with, you know, our office of emergency management here, but also with Essex County OEM as well.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I need to make sure to thank Andrew again for the amount of work that he's done to help continue, get this program going in the right direction. It takes a lot of work to do it, and, and things are shaping up really well. You know, this, Sandy was the first time we really were able to rely on CERT people to staff shelters for an extended period of time. For us to be able to do that is great. And people will also notice that in my report, my after-action report from Sandy, there's going to be some recommendations in there, some of them budgetary, about supporting CERT and making sure that they have some of the equipment and the tools they need, and Seton Hall has been, you know, an absolutely fantastic partner in all of this, especially Tom, and they are really good at writing grants. So whatever we can do between the two organizations, and even with Maplewood as well, I know, you know, that's all being talked about, so that's all going in a great direction. One last update from my neck of the woods, that's also kind of about partnerships, is I had a really great meeting with councilman Ron Rice from Newark, and I wanted to update the board. Basically, we talked about, well, what can we do between South Orange and Newark, and at some point looping in Maplewood, Seton Hall, Tuxedo Park, Irvington Ave Business District, about what can we do to bring economic development to the east side of town and on the border of South Orange and Newark? There are some interesting challenges that Newark faces, for example, one of the things I learned is that a whole section of South Orange Ave is actually in East Orange, did not know that. So when you're driving into Newark, if you're driving east, on the left side, there's a whole series of areas where there's fast food, and it's actually East Orange. And I personally didn't know that, and as, a lot of residents in the area who said, would complain about the fast food places coming in said, well, you know, we're trying, but that's East Orange that's letting them in. Anyway, so they have some, you know, very interesting development challenges, I think we do too. There's one story that I wanted to share, and then we can move on, which is that a landlord on Irvington Ave that's a Newark approach, councilman Rice and maybe some other folks about, oh, you know, how do we get the holiday lights up? Those look so great, you know, but there aren't any here on Irvington Ave. And it's like, well, this is kind of funny actually, because, you know, Irvington Ave has three towns, Newark, South Orange, and Maplewood, that are all on it, so, you know, the, the north side of Irvington Ave is South Orange and then Newark, and the other side is Maplewood, so who would even be responsible for doing that? You could do one little section from one town, but certainly Newark's not going to pay for us, and we're not going to pay for them, so how do we sort that out? And what we had talked about, and Mr. Rother, I had sent you a memo asking for some clarification on this, at some point, which is the creation of improvement districts between municipal boundaries, and just, you know, what would that look like? How's that possible? Is there any way that Newark, Maplewood, and South Orange can get together and start to bring more attention to that area? And there is apparently a lot of residents in Newark, and I know in South Orange and Tuxedo Park that really want to see that happen. So it's just kind of an exciting thing, very preliminary discussion, just throwing some ideas out there, getting to know each other on this issue a little bit better. So I'll continue to update the board and the public as we move forward with those things, but did just want to make sure to put that out there, that that's something that we're looking at in some more detail. So that was my quote-unquote "quick" update. Mr. Lewis?
Before we get to Mr. Lewis's report, on your Google email rollout, when are we going to have regular email? Because I feel like I've only gotten, you know, five emails in the last five days or something like that.
Oh, you should, my understanding, you shouldn't be dropping emails at this point, unless you're still, unless you're still using the old email system.
I'm getting emails, but I can't send through there, I have to send them.
But obviously, if you have a, you know, question about that, reach out to Barry or the IT manager.
Or Stan.
The IT manager.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, today I got one from Mark.
That came from his email. It didn't go to Google.
I sent it, no, went to Google.
Well, it came to my, it came to my South Orange. I'm just saying.
Either way, the trustee meeting is not really the place to troubleshoot your phone, but if you do contact Stan, I mean, you will.
I'm not troubleshooting my.
I wouldn't email him, but call him.
Okay, well, I'm just raising a question about your report, because I, you know, to me, it's been a disaster for about a week now, and I don't know what.
Have you spoke to him about it?
It was a disaster.
No, because when, the notice that we got is that, you know, your email's going to be down, and, and there's going to, it's going to be a little while before the kinks get worked out, I'm just wondering when the kinks are worked out.
Did you get Barry's email that we were sent?
He sent a text.
You got my response, but did you get his initial email?
That was the, that was the first email. Did I get your response? I mean, I don't remember now.
Did you call Stan and have him reset it up?
I didn't call Stan, I mean, first of all, I was waiting and being patient. You want me to call Stan tomorrow, I'll call.
Yeah, that's what.
You're all telling me, you're all getting your.
Some of these things, if he doesn't know.
I only know the ones I got, I don't know the ones I didn't get.
But that just makes us public service. They don't know, we don't know if there's a problem unless we call and say there's a problem, I don't know.
No, I guess the step was that you had to call him so he could reset you up.
Yeah, I think.
Everybody had to go through a step.
Yeah, clearly, but we, independent of going through the steps, and there have been some bumps, and it has been, you know, I guess to be expected when you're migrating that many email accounts. So I think for the public and anyone listening out there, there is a distinct possibility, if you've been emailing your normal email addresses, they may not have gone through. So if you haven't heard, I'd encourage you to send them again. I think a lot of the major humps were over, and probably now down to the more individualized ones, certainly any of the trustees, if you're having difficulty, I did on your home phones or whatever, you can certainly call me, but I'll then immediately try and get Stan on the phone and get Stan to walk you through it, but we'll get through it, and, you know, it's improving every day.
Yeah, and I'll echo Mr. Lewis, that if people have sent an email to any of us, you know, individually, especially if it's to one email address, and there, you know, were people CC'd where someone else might have picked it up, and you didn't get a response, try resetting it again. There were definitely a couple days where it was a little sloppy, and we have a company that's supposedly, instead of walking us through this whole thing, but that's another. Anyway, so yeah, trustee Bauer, definitely follow up with Stan about that.
I will.
Okay. Mr. Lewis?
Okay, a couple items, and I won't go through, I can send a written status report, I won't go through all of it, but Village Hall renovation, there's a couple of developments you recall, we had authorized them going out for an updated asbestos assessment, the prior one was about 10 years old, and was largely based on continued occupancy, employee health-related issues. We got the updated one, the architect's been looking at that, the cost estimator's been looking at it. In a nutshell, the overall scope of the asbestos date necessary has increased probably about 30%, somewhere on the magnitude of 27,000 square feet up to about 36,000 square feet. A lot of it relates to some of the ceilings and other items that the original study didn't envision touching, but the complete gutting and renovation would require. In addition, part of it's related to, it's my understanding, the threshold levels of what they detect and that requires remediation have been reduced since 10 years ago. And then there's the cost, we're working through the cost estimates. The bottom line is, it will be an increase in cost, it will be a meaningful increase in cost. We'll have some more detailed estimates for you shortly. With that, we'll also have updated cost estimates on the construction. We've also been and continue to look into the trailer as the interim offices, but some of the initial feedback that we got as we really drilled down and met with companies and gave them to build out specs and the site work and the utilities, and when you project that into a cost per foot over the period of time we'd envisioned, some of the, some of the prices have caused us to now also take a look at available office space on a more just, you know, traditional commercial office space lease, and we you know, traditional commercial office space lease, and we think there's some potentially viable options there that may prove to be a better alternative to the trailers.
Oh, wait a minute. So, you need to talk, say that again, you're not, you're looking at another alternative?
We are continuing, we've had discussions and have some concerns about where ultimately the trailers will end up. We're still moving forward with getting bids on the trailers, but as sort of hedging our bets and looking at the alternatives, when we met with these companies and they gave us sort of preliminary estimates, and you, you know, did the math, figuring out how many square feet and how much per foot for the period of time, it's really the build-out and the fit-out and some of the site work, when you spread it over a, in the scheme of things, relatively short period of time, you know, 30 months, 36 months on the outside, that cost built into, on top of the rental of the trailers themselves, you wind up with a square footage price that, at least preliminary, looks to be significantly in excess of market rate for office space. So we're looking at some, you know, alternative options, and we'll have some on that soon.
So what's the timeline on getting the information to make a decision?
Soon, I'm actually waiting some...
Would assume me.
Soon. I mean, in a perfect world, either the next meeting or certainly no later than the first meeting in March, I would hope that we're gonna have a recommendation of which way to go. We've actually viewed some office space, got some preliminary information, lease numbers, floor plans, and at the same time, running parallel with that is the trailer.
So then, if that's the timeline, then the employees probably are not expected to be relocated to sometime in May?
Yeah, that's probably realistic.
Yeah, my only concern, and I do respect the fact of the challenges you just shared with us, is that, you know, last year around this time, everybody was expected to be out of the building, and I think before November, or somewhere around that time. And so now, we're back seven or eight months, and I just have this reoccurring nightmare of the firehouse, you know, scenario, so...
Well, I would say this, and certainly that was, it was about last year this time, I think it was probably my first meeting here, and that was the information that I had presented to me at that point in time. I wouldn't say that we're back seven months, other than we're back from what was probably premature date to begin with. And as I now look back and know the point and the diligence and in the process that we were, it was too early to be projecting dates like that.
Okay. Now, I just, let me just finish, because I wanted, I do like the option, you know, if we can take existing office space, for a lot of reasons. One, we don't have to give up parking space that's being used by residents to support businesses in downtown. Secondly, it would be wonderful, since we have to make the expenditure, to be able to generate that revenue for empty space for a current business owner in town. And so, you know, for those two reasons alone, if it makes financial sense and meets the needs of the village as far as operating on a daily basis, that would be my preference.
Yeah, the space that we did look at, most likely we could fast-track that versus the trailers. That should be available sooner than what we could do with the trailers.
Okay.
The other is, is that there are monthly ongoing operating expenses, which are part of the base rent that we would have in that location, which wouldn't occur versus a trailer like, you know, electric and et cetera, because that's all...
Utilities, cleaning, those other things that are included in the commercial lease that would be in addition to the numbers we looked at on the trailers.
Okay. Thank you.
Got a number of personnel things going on. We are, as you're aware, doing a deputy administrator search, I think.
You've got to talk to your mic.
Got another five today. We've received in excess of 30 resumes, so the committee will be looking at those, kind of whittling them down to an interview pool, who will forward on that. Again, a reminder, Budget Workshop tomorrow at 7:30. At that point, we'll discuss capital as well as the current fund budget. Just remind everybody to, you know, look at your notes, there were a couple of issues coming out of the last Budget Workshop, where there were some potential additional expenses that were not then included, but hopefully we can have a discussion of those tomorrow night. As the village president alluded to, the FEMA reimbursement for Hurricane Sandy, we're really moving in a good direction, at a good pace. Lot of credit to the department heads, particularly Tommy Machetti, and as well as Chief Shalala and Chief Markey for compiling their data, keeping their records contemporaneously with the storm. We've submitted most of our project worksheets, there's a couple of equipment ones still outstanding, trying to pin down the details on some of the fire equipment and when it was used. But all told, it looks like our total of project worksheets submitted to FEMA are gonna exceed $600,000. And under the funding model, we get 75% of that back, so that would be approximately $450,000, which would be obviously welcome. On the redevelopment and South Orange Commons, the former bikeless site, Mr. Ayuso, that project, you'll recall, was approved last year with some amendments by the planning board based on a prior approval. We did recently approve the financial agreement, and we're finally, kind of finalizing the developers' agreement relating to the actual site work. In those terms, hope to have that on the agenda, ideally as early as the next meeting. They are currently looking to break ground in mid-March, so that would be exciting to finally see some activity on that site. On our Third and Valley site with...
Oh, wait, hold on. So once they break ground, what's the estimated time to complete the project?
I don't know, but I will, can have that for you shortly. Actually, we've been trading phone calls to schedule meeting with Mr. Ayuso to discuss some of the scheduling issues this week.
Okay. I'd love to know that.
Just to let you know.
It's not only from breaking ground, it's 18 months from when he really starts construction. I don't want to confuse the two dates, because sometimes when they break ground, they're doing other stuff and things. But 18 months of construction time.
Okay.
The total, it should take him 18 months to build it out?
Well, it could be two years before, you know, from breaking ground, if you want to...
Yeah, basically, what I really want to know in very simple terms, when they, when it would be available to rent, you know?
Probably a couple of years.
Okay.
Probably so.
On our Third and Valley site, again, the redevelopment plan amendment was passed, so John and Rose have started the, doing sort of their legwork on the site plan process. They met with Mr. Renda and the board secretary to go through the forms, the procedures, the applications, the checklists. They also, we had took an opportunity to introduce the construction official for ultimately where the permitting and stuff on that's gonna go. They are, their target right now, as they look to break ground, they're hoping in November with Third and Valley, so that would be exciting as well. In connection with that, we are continuing to look at a couple of different options, and have discussed with them the ability for them to sort of GC the construction of the fire, the rescue squad headquarters. The, we have done the conditional reappointment. Mr. Baumann, our redevelopment council, is working back and forth with their attorney on the redevelopment and financial agreement. I anticipate that when that gets distilled down to a, and which is getting close, that we'll look to have Mr. Baumann here to meet with the board, likely in an executive session to discuss those negotiations, those terms, and where we're looking with that financial agreement. We're also, as part of our meetings, discussing with them replacement parking, part of their RFP and their proposal, placed a burden on them to help participate in finding replacement parking, identifying a number of sites, one of which, I think they initiated some discussions with the path mark over possibly excess parking they have there. There's a chimney stop right there. And there's a number of other things that were in my reports, some of which I think may be addressed in some of the committee reports, so I won't step on those.
Grants?
Okay.
Grants?
Oh, yeah, grants. But just in general, we are getting up to speed on all our existing grants, pending applications. I will have a, we got recently some correspondence in on some of our outstanding Green Acres grants that I'll be forwarding to get some, we need to take some action on. I think we've made contact with all the pending, sort of open grants. We're collecting any deliverables or anything that is good for us. I've got signed up in the Sage system, some of the other points. We're also, and it was discussed, I think, at one of the last meetings, maybe at the Budget Workshop, a company that Trustee Levinson, the name of which is escaping me.
Winning Strategies.
Winning Strategies was a company that he addressed. They are, I think, we're awaiting an updated, their proposal was a couple of years old, so an updated proposal for what I guess they were gonna do as sort of an initial, first blush glance at what our needs are, where they could think that they could help us find funding, particularly at the federal level. So as soon as we get that, it looks to be, as of my understanding, it will be below even the quote threshold, but it's sort of an initial step, and then from that point, I guess we could take a look at that and then decide which direction we're gonna go with the grants. But just in general, we're, I think, collected, in terms of our open and active and pending grants, and then hopefully we'll start looking for and expanding the scope of looking for available grants. And ideally, as some of the new personnel, deputy administrator may come on board, depending on their background and experience, that might be one avenue in terms of grant focus, or there's been discussion about going a different route, either with a grant person or a consultant. So that's the story on the grants, and other than that, just any questions?
Thank you. Trustee Levinson, Finance and IT Committee.
Do you want to, Steve, or...
Do you have anything for East Orange Water?
Not really, no. Other than anything for the legal personnel committee.
Okay. Finance and IT?
Yeah, as Barry mentioned, tomorrow night, we're having our next capital budget, oh, excuse me, Budget Workshop meeting. Out of our finance committee meeting, our expectation is to have a capital, initial capital budget available for ordinance reading at our next meeting, which will be a subset of the final capital budget, where it looks like it's about $1 million. It includes both roads and some IT necessities, one part of the IT being the CAD-RMS system, which I'll discuss a little further down in the discussions that we had about the ICMA report. Another item that we talked about was placing our financial reports on the website. We will be very shortly taking all of the financial reports, putting them up on the website as a separate folder, so that the public can have a general view of all of the various requirements that we have, such as the annual debt statement or annual finance statement, and budget, et cetera. We still haven't gotten a finalization of a cash management plan. We discussed the ICMA recommendations, this is the police review, police department review, pieces which fall within the finance committee. We are looking at the possibility of getting additional license plate readers. We had a discussion about prioritizing locations within the village where we want to start implementing camera locations. We are as well looking at adding additional MDTs, these are the laptops that go in the police cars for the supervisory personnel. And we are specifically looking at a CAD, this is Computer Aid Dispatch Record Management System, which will actually respond to a lot of the open questions in the recommendation. At the next meeting, we should have resolutions for two professional services, RFPs that we put out, one being the village attorney and the other one being the auditor. Under grants, Barry just mentioned Winning Strategies, we had a discussion with them, and looking forward to starting to kick that off. We have some very significant areas that, specifically Village Hall, that we should be eligible for additional grants. One of the topics that I would like to discuss is vehicle replacements, specifically for the Village Hall or the administrative complex. Typically, what we have done, and we discussed is that the finance committee taken, beat up police cars and reused them for the various departments within Village Hall. What we're proposing is to start acquiring either electric vehicles or hybrids to be used as a pool cars for the various administrative staff, and hopefully we can move forward with that. We should be looking for proposals for the cost for those cars, and scrapping the old police cars. I don't think they're appropriate for use within the departments.
Yeah, if I can add to that real quick, I guess there's been the tradition here, and probably a lot of places, you know, is instead of throwing out an old police car, you know, because they're built with, you know, extra durable parts and all these different things, you know, find another use for them. One, recently went to the rescue squad as a first responder vehicle, which is working out fine. But in general, for example, if you have a staff person, or myself, or a member of the board that's going to something in Trenton, you know, you're basically taking your own personal car, and our staff shouldn't have to do that. And I wouldn't, and I don't think anybody does, take one of those old cars on the highway down there. You might not get pulled over, but you might not make it. So, you know, as Trustee Levinson said, you know, looking at especially energy efficient, and especially now that we have electric vehicle chargers, you know, we should really take advantage of that.
And as Mark says, the gas goes, the old ones.
Right, right, and those old police cars, they use a ton of gas.
VAs.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, four and a half liter V8. And on that note, one thing maybe to think about, either in finance or IT, or when we talk about the capital budget, is that as we continue to purchase vehicles, police vehicles, and any of these, especially police, that we should really only be purchasing four-wheel drive or all-wheel drive vehicles from this point forward. We talked about that this year.
Right.
When we were buying the Dodge Chargers, and the person from Dodge said that they were not making all-wheel drive versions with the police package this year, which was 2012, but they will in 2013. So, and I know Ford has a new police interceptor or Taurus that they use for police purposes, and I think Milburn has a couple that look pretty nice. But anyway, and I've heard of from all the officers and all the management and administration, that especially during these snowstorms, you know, you shouldn't be basically putting all the cars in the, you know, parking lot and tying the chains on, you should just have four-wheel drive vehicles that can drive in any weather. So anyway, so that's just one.
Yeah, the next topic is the IT projects, which you began to discuss, Everbridge being our reverse 911 replacement. It's on hold right now because of some of the problems that we had with the Google email. Those problems seem to be going away right now. I personally have now got my personal account straightened out. I think it's just another couple of days, and we should be fine. Contract manager, Barry is going to be looking into acquiring a product so that we can maintain our contracts. And one of the other areas that we're investigating as part of the transition is voice-over IP as our telephone replacement, and as helping us in the migration from Village Hall to another, wherever the other location would be.
We're just going through that at Essex County, voice-over IP, significant savings.
Well, it's not only the savings, it is the ease of us being able to shift from place to place. We look for that to be both for Village Hall and for the parking authority when they do relocate, so we don't have to go through all of the wiring and ordering of telephones. Just another part of the Google mail, it's one less piece of a server that we have to relocate from Village Hall to another location. It's gone now. We can decommission...
Another major cost savings.
Right. Decommission that server. We're going to move forward with some process initiatives. We're gonna take a look at our finance department, specifically the process of how payroll is done, and the other one is our, the way we do PO processing, our purchase order processing. There can be some significant changes in the way we have the process flow. And Steve has written a memo, basically outlining our purchasing process as well. We have been in discussions with the municipal court. We're looking to have a third-party billing contract available, so that we can go after the deadbeats and be able to, what was it, $100,000 and somewhere $1,000,000 of outstanding violations that...
Yeah, there's a total of in excess of $300,000 outstanding, our share of which would be $155,000, yeah.
We'll get a percentage of that by using a third-party collection. And the third party doesn't take any part of our revenue, they add their fee on top of what they collect. As part of the neighborhood meetings that we had, we have put together a tree maintenance proposal. We have an individual who's a certified tree expert, who is preparing a proposal for us to use that individual to go around... us to use that individual to go around and inventory our trees, make recommendations of what needs to be pruned or cut down, be available for reviewing trees that may have been damaged. And the other one is to put together a forestry plan, apply for a grant and to get a forestry plan.
And would, that would include planting or replanting trees?
Yes. Yeah, and the last thing is that we're putting together an RFP for the purchase of natural gas, which can represent a significant savings because we are a very large consumer of the natural gas being the gas lens. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Davis forward.
You all have received the minutes from the meeting and so hopefully you had an opportunity to review them, so I won't go into detail of the 18 or more items that we discussed at our meeting. However, I'm going to discuss just two items and then counselor, you will touch on one, but I'll just go over two items. And this is more regarding personnel, new hires. We went through a thorough search for a deputy clerk because that was, position was open because the deputy clerk that was with us for 10 years found another opportunity with another municipality. As a result of that opening, we put together a job description and a team, a review team was put together, including many members from the, a couple of members from the Personnel and Legal Committee. We interviewed three finalists and agreed upon and made an offer. Am I correct, Barry?
We're, yeah, we're in the midst of it.
Making an offer. And once that process is completed, hopefully, we will have a new deputy clerk, starting within the next 30 days. And that's a key spot and it will be a good thing. And the clerk office has been, you know, working without one full-time key person for quite some time. The other position, a newly created position that was created once a certain position was left open because the individual sought an opportunity elsewhere, we did a real assessment of the administration and determined that the best way to fill that opening was to create a deputy administrator so that the administrator could get some real assistance with a strong individual with experience and skill set to more efficiently and effectively better serve the board of trustees and all the residents in the village. All the department heads report directly to the administrator, so it's a huge responsibility. A job description was created, a request for resumes were solicited and we're in the process now, are receiving resumes till what date?
February 21st.
21st. So anyone who's interested in the role can go to the website and the information will be there. And as of now, how many resumes have we received?
It's probably about 35 because there's been five more meetings since 3 o'clock this afternoon.
So we're getting a really tremendous response. And with that, the process will be the same, a team to review the resumes will be done and from that, we'll select about six to eight semifinalists and then schedule appointments, I mean, interview times for the board as a whole to interview these individuals to get to a final decision because this is a critical spot. And again, you have the minutes of the meeting, so I'm not going to go into any other details. But Steve, would you like to-
Yeah, sure. There were three items that were discussed and passed along to the full board via the memo and this is the new process that we're pursuing in the legal and personnel committee that we're now meeting the same evening of the regular board meeting.
Which is the fourth Monday of every month.
And those matters that are resolved for reference to the full board are going to be forwarded by the following Monday to everyone in memo form so that everyone has a full understanding of what was done at the committee and along with any drafts of ordinances or resolutions that are required. Two of the ordinances were on the agenda today during the regular portion of the meeting for action, namely the surcharge for sewer costs. The other two matters include the old stone house where I got charged by this board some meetings ago to come up with a plan to offer it for sale. We discussed and forwarded to all of you an ad for the advertising of the sale plus some supplemental information and a resolution authorizing the sale, which could be put on the agenda at the next meeting for action if you choose. The third item is an ordinance repealing a number of quasi-criminal ordinances. And these ordinances have come to our attention in a variety of ways, one of which is a threat to sue us because some of these ordinances have been declared unconstitutional. And the other means that they came to us is via general code that is doing the recodification and they have recommended to us that we repeal these ordinances, either because they're unconstitutional or because they've been preempted by state law. And you have attached to that memo, this ordinance which repeals all of those ordinances.
Those ordinances that are being considered for repeal, have you gone over them with the parties such as the judge, the judges and the prosecutors?
We were supposed to have a meeting last week. We had a meeting scheduled to discuss a variety of things, including these ordinances. And for some reason, all of the people who are going to participate in the meeting couldn't make it. And I understand from the court clerk that it's going to be rescheduled. But I am intending in advance of the meeting to send these ordinances to them.
And the ones that were being considered unconstitutional, is that tested by the state or is this just people who expressing their opinions about the-
Oh, no, no, no. These, no, and we've done, we've done the research on this. There's case law, there's case law that has either held that these ordinances are unconstitutional or that they are in fact preempted by existing state law.
Does that include the ordinance on lawn signs?
No. No, 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 that's-
It's going to be a celebration we can finally get with.
Yeah, okay.
Do you want to talk to payable violations?
Yeah, well, that's also one of the items that's on the agenda for that meeting if, when we have it, that there's, there's simply a concern by the judges sitting in our municipal court that they want to have the flexibility to increase the fines for repeat offenders and it's a question of how we accommodate that by having them prepayable. That's going to be an item on the agenda when we have the meeting.
What the objective is, is that when we do have violations, that we can list them as being payable, that cuts people appearing in court, cuts down the court processing time, just makes the court running more efficiently.
Sure.
Okay.
That's it.
Planning and zoning?
Our meeting is actually next Wednesday, February 15th. We did have, I did meet with the subset of the planning board and the board of adjustment to review the RFPs from the planner. They both agreed they're going to send the official recommendation to keep the current planner, but we wanted to discuss it more at planning and zoning committee, how we're going to work with them.
Perfect.
That was it.
And I know Public Safety did not meet since the last meeting. Public Works?
Public Works did not meet on January 23rd. However, since I was sick and absent in January, I'll report on the previous meeting. The most substantive conversation we had at the previous meeting was about the, trying to get a proposal either to the county from Sal Renda or Engineer or to have Sal, you know, think through what kind of improvements could be made to the area of Scotland Road, excuse me, not Scotland Road, to Wyoming where Rich Janna lives. I don't remember actually his street address number and the properties across the street. There's a significant storm problem that occurs in major storm events, but it doesn't have to be, you know, the 100-year storm, just sort of any decent-sized storm where principally, in our view, because of buildout on top of and contributing to steep slope area where a lot of storm water rushes down what's kind of become almost a ravine in the back of yards that meet there. And previously, we'd put in place a rather large culvert and a trash rack to try to prevent a lot of debris and to capture rainwater and to prevent debris from going out into the road. That's working if it's cleaned out. The DPW staff does a very good job, in my view, of cleaning out not only that ravine area and trash rack, but the one that also comes down sort of behind forest onto Ridgewood and the north end of town and, you know, various other entities like that. I think a lot of times citizens aren't aware of that, but DPW does have a regular method of both trying to keep catch basins clean, regular catch basins, as well as those kind of culverts and trash racks. Anyway, the downside resident, the Janas, are still having water enter their property and it's their view that the water that sloughs off their property and keeps going, coming down the hill has undermined at least one tree which fell about a while ago, a few years ago. And, you know, and this could be happening further. Another problem that occurs with things like this is sometimes people put, and this is one of the things that's happened in that particular area, in order to try to stabilize a downward slope in your backyard that might go to what has become a ravine, which is really just a stormwater channel. People are putting what ought to be prohibited plants like bamboo. We really can't afford to have that. DPW had to take out a whole bunch of bamboo that was in the river project right in the area where, that had just been replanted. We'd never had any bamboo in the river, so we're fairly confident that it's coming down this ravine area from Wyoming to Ridgewood into the stream, which I just described. So, the problem is Wyoming is a county road. We don't really have any jurisdiction to make any improvements. The improvements would be expensive anyway and the problem is really one that West Orange has thrust on us back in the day when storm water was allowed to exit your property and you didn't have to take care of it on your property. It's a thorny problem. I frankly don't know what the solution is going to be. Apparently, this has been brought before the board on several occasions. So, we're going to continue to work on that. Sal has not presented us with any, I think Sal thinks it's kind of intractable, frankly, but we're going to press on with that. The only other really substantive conversation that we began to have, but we haven't and it sounds like I missed something, at Finance and Information Technology is an updated tree ordinance and essentially a tree plan, both maintenance, replanning and so forth, that obviously was spurred into more action by the storm, but needs to be taken care of anyway. So, that's pretty much what we're working on. And I have asked Tom Machetti for an updated volume report on both single stream and what's down at the DPW yard in terms of separate source recycling, but I don't have that yet. And otherwise, kudos on the snow plowing as well. Tommy goes by my house, so I saw him Friday at about 6:00.
Was anybody at a rec?
I was at, I was at the rec meeting. The first thing, we had the Darryl Walker from the street fair to come there to discuss possibilities of expanding the footprint, picking up some of the costs and a couple of other items and making sure we upgrade the quality of vendors. He, you know, he wanted to explain how he's done it in the past in other towns and, you know, towns, successful street fairs build up vendors over time and people make that request. Most of these people put in their request for street fairs very far in advance, so if the town builds a reputation, you wind up getting better vendors, which is one of the important things of sticking it out and going with it. We decided we would stick with the same footprint for another year while we try and build it up and then expand it down past Stone Street maybe. He agreed to pick up up to $750 of the cost of the town, which was last year, I'm not really sure what the total was that we spent. I heard the number 1,500 going around, although we talked closer to 1,000 to 1,200 when we were discussing it. So, I don't know what the real number was still. But it's fair considering that we have a very small footprint for a street fair and we're working on it. And next year, and the rec department is going to help, is going to co-sponsor with him this year and help bring more artists there as possible. And pool is moving ahead with plans to open for Memorial Day weekend. You know, the weather's been great the last few years, which means it'll probably rain the one year we open early, but, you know, we're setting it for the long term. And the RFP went out for the food vendors, which I think we're due next week or this week. So, we should know very soon who the food vendor is. Those are the main elements of the-
Thank you. So, we've got a number of discussion items tonight. Considering, I believe I see some people here from YouthNet, I would like to move things around so you guys can go first. So, the discussion for the board was the YouthNet service level agreement. I would imagine that the trustees would like someone from YouthNet perhaps.
We sent around the service level agreement that was agreed upon. It was modeled after the one we did with YMCA. So, you basically have a service level agreement based on the services that were presented to us and written in the same format that we, for the YMCA agreement that we've done in the past, which, of course, we never frankly, don't discuss that to the same level that we discuss YouthNet for some reason. But I, we'd asked for feedback on it and I don't think anyone objected to the service level agreement that was sent around. At least no one, no one put an email objection back to the rep committee. So, we just, we recommend it moving forward with it at the next meeting.
Okay. Are there any questions that any trustees have?
Diane Malloy is here if anyone has questions.
Yeah, for them?
Have her come up to the mic.
Well, I just, I had a general question, which I still don't have an answer. Whatever happened to the after-school program and the Y?
Have her come up to the mic.
Yeah, Diane, if you'd like to come up, please.
I don't know if she knows who I answered.
I, yeah, I don't know if-
Is she going to introduce her name and stuff? So, what was your question?
What happened with the ASP, the after-school program, the Y and YouthNet?
Just Diane, if you could just introduce yourself briefly.
Oh, yes, I'm Diane Malloy, Executive Director of YouthNet. The after-school program that was sponsored by the Maplewood Rec Department in South Orange, okay, so that was actually disbanded and the Y took over the elementary after-school program. So, the Y now services the elementary schools as an after-school program and YouthNet has reorganized and remodeled the after-school program to make it an extended enrichment program for parents and for both middle schools. So, it was actually split, the Y has the elementary and YouthNet has the middle schools, but it's not the same program anymore at the middle schools.
But does the Y have any relationship with Maplewood and South Orange and the school district for providing that program or is it totally independent?
It's independent, but it's, but it's located in the schools. So, but there is no contract between Maplewood and South Orange to the Y for that.
As we had before.
As you had before.
And that was the other question. And that was the other question I had about the funds dispersment.
Yeah, looking, I was obviously not part of that. You brought that to my attention, Diane. I've got some of the information. I'm tracking it all down. There was a pool of money, I think, at the dissolution of this, and near as I can tell, it was a quarter to go back to South Orange, a quarter to the school board, and I guess Maplewood was getting...
Getting half.
Two, two shares because they were going to handle the administration. So, I'm trying to track down the funds and if the funds were returned or where they went.
Let's finish with YouthNet. Anyone else have questions for? Everybody's in favor of this?
Yeah, I reviewed it. I have no problem with it.
Thank you. So, is the board prepared for this to be listed on the next regular meeting as a resolution?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll make sure to do that. Thank you. Next, the Open Space Trust Fund. Trustee Bauer.
I prepared a draft policy and it was reviewed in both the Public Works meeting and the, and in Finance. And so, I brought it to the board with the recommendation of both of those committees. It was a two to one vote in Public Works and it was a three zero vote in Finance. It wasn't redistributed again for this meeting, however, I don't know whether we really need to do that.
I think we left it that we want to have another Open Space Committee meeting, make sure we had all the members. There was some disagreement according to trustee Goldberg, who was at the meeting.
That was the no, no vote?
Excuse me?
That was the no vote?
Yes, that was for no vote.
He had a different recollection in the meeting, and when I asked Brian O'Leary to send me an update, because there were no minutes taken at that meeting, he said that he, he agreed with Michael Goldberg's assessment. I said, then we have to have another meeting and I've got to have everybody sitting in the room and we have to have this done with minutes so we can have a real meeting, but I said, we have to have the Open Space Committee brought back to, to full strength again if they're going to have input on this. If, if we're not going to have, if they're not going to have input on the capital draft policy and we're going to do it, then we should discuss, when we're going to discuss this, that, how we're going to move forward then. But I, I think we left it that we wanted their input on this.
Okay.
Are they, have they been asked?
Yeah, I did ask that. I mean, we did discuss it at the meeting. The conversation sort of veered off into some different, different discussions other than the capital maintenance policy. So, basically, the group, everyone was there except one person, Rob Fish, who couldn't make it. So, I mean, it was a duly constituted meeting, even though it wasn't advertised, but the problem was that the conversation veered off into what the purpose of the committee was and when the committee was going to approve or give its advice, if not approval, on expenditures from the Open Space Trust Fund. My recommendation was that it attend the budget workshops and particularly the capital budget workshop and that that was an appropriate place as a planning forum for expenditures over time, because expenditures over time, you know, should certainly be thought about in advance. That doesn't mean that if something comes up, we shouldn't feel free to spend the money.
Which we've done.
The current or former chair, however you look at it, Brian O'Leary, wanted to make sure that the Open Space Trust Fund Advisory Board had input to every expenditure, and I was very concerned that that was going to really slow up progress.
But let's, let's take...
So, that devolved into a discussion of what is the purpose of the Open Space Trust Fund Advisory Board? I mean, and that didn't go anywhere because they kicked that conversation back to us. So, it's kind of chicken and egg. Do, how do you want to resolve this discussion? I don't care one way or the other. The particular item that I was concerned about, although I think there was more than one item, but one particular item that I was concerned about, and that is the removal of the invasive species that has attached itself to the west side of the river, east side of Meadow Brook Lane, which has to be taken care of by the spring, and the spring is quickly rolling around. Tommy gave up after the contentious discussion at the Public Works meeting and said he would find it in his own operating budget, which is exactly the kind of thing that I do not think we should be doing, but...
Okay, so I think, I think it's fair to say that we should discuss this at the capital budget? You don't think we should discuss it at the capital budget?
No, but I think we've had a number of discussions, both at Public Works as well as Finance, and I think there's, there's general agreement from a policy perspective of how to use the monies.
Yeah, you had, you had one vote, it was three, zero, one, two, one.
I don't know what general agreement means because there's going to be dissent. I mean, trustee Goldberg dissented from at least some of those...
But there was a majority that...
There was certainly a majority.
And he can dissent on the vote that goes forward?
I agree. I, I just wanted to put something on paper because, actually, I don't remember exactly what the genesis, genesis of the conversation was, but there were certain expenditures...
Maintenance.
...that Mr. Lewis brought to our attention, so I said, why don't I just resolve it? Because this had been a longstanding conversation, so I put pen to paper. There was the policy and we can move forward on...
If we could use the monies for maintenance.
Maintenance of lands that are preserved for open spaces clearly eligible by both law and our ordinance.
Correct.
Yeah, so to me, it's a no-brainer. I mean, I understand the dissent, I respect the dissent, but I don't agree with it.
And you know what? At this point, why don't we put it on for vote? And, and you vote, you vote your position and we always respect dissent if it's given respectfully, so that's it. We can move on.
Okay, but there remains the conversation, particularly if you wanted to have a vote by the Open Space Trust Fund Advisory Board, because they, they didn't take a vote. They, it was just sort of the general conversation, which they then deferred back to us on what their role is. I mean, it's either a planning function or it's an, you know, expenditure approval function, or I guess it could be both.
It's your call because the law doesn't provide for it.
I, I think to expedite this because it was fully vetted, why weigh down the process? You know, you've had two distinct committees who've discussed this in detail, and then there was a, a, I guess, a straw vote taken, for lack of a better way. One committee was three zero, another committee was two one.
The, I think that's fine for this, but I think, you know, for the, this is ongoing money coming in. I forgot how much comes in every year, but two hundred and seventy thousand, more or less?
Two twenty-five.
Two twenty, okay, so we have this money coming in every year, and I think that we have to have policies in place on this and, and the, to me, the role of the Open Space Committee was to advise us on ways to spend this money, but the, and then the board obviously has to make the decision. I think part of it is they felt a little insulted maybe, you know, that we didn't necessarily follow the recommendations to, to the way that they had wanted us to, because part of it, partly because of money, partly because there were just certain things we couldn't do as a board.
How often does the committee meet?
So, the question is, so I'd like to make sure we get the Open Space Committee, but our, you know, our role is we want to be advising us on what it is for the long term and not just for the short term. For the one-term project, I understand, we voted, you know, if there's a majority opinion from the committees, can move forward with it. I'm fine with it.
But your concern is about a policy going forward, since this is...
We have, we have several projects that we want, that as a board as a whole has wants, and maybe individually, we may have different ones, you know, the River Corridor project. There's renovations to the skate house that have to be done. There's the, the south side of the pond.
There's more needs than there is money.
We actually, we actually, you know, it's, it's, what we really need is more money in the Open Space from, not to just any big surprise, but we need Esses County to step up and give us our fair share, which they haven't done. Of course, I shouldn't point to Deborah when I say that, but I do anyway.
Yeah, you shouldn't.
But it's, you know, I've said it before, you know, we're the only town in Esses County without a park, so we're losing out on our fair share from Esses County. So, we'd like to, we'd like to push that along, but I think the Open Space Committee could help with that, with projects and giving us a long-term goal of how to spend the money.
Well, now that you, you put it that way, because I do know that Esses County has a very, very active and engaged Open Space Committee, and perhaps if that committee can then build a relationship with the Esses County Committee, which is a very strong committee.
But how would what Janine is proposing be in conflict with what we're saying about the Open Space Committee?
It's not.
It's not, it's not in conflict, it's just...
This is just a subset of the issue, and let me respond to, to what trustee Rosner said, with which I agree, but I want to make a strong pitch. I mean, to my mind, you know, if they want to meet monthly and give advice on some particular expenditures, that's fine with me. However, I do think it sets up a situation where they might continue to feel insulted because they may make a recommendation and we may disagree and see a different priority because, you know, we see a bigger picture or maybe we see a smaller picture or whatever. It's sort of like what happens with the planning board. When the planning board came, when the redevelopment, you know, ordinance for Third and Valley came back and they saw that, you know, we had, you know, sort of X, you know, I don't know, I'll say four of the six things that they recommended, they said, what are we here for? We're chopped liver. This is what happens with the planning board.
I'll tell you what, we could take a different approach. We could say at the capital budget meeting, the board should discuss which projects we want to prioritize and then go back to the Open Space Committee and come back to advise us on how they thought we should proceed with it.
That's what I think.
So, if we say, if we say our three priorities are the River Corridor project, the skate house and the, and the, you know, doing the work by Water Landsfield on the other side of the river, if those are our three priorities, we can say, how do you think we should be splitting up the money on this, or how do you see this working out?
And beard.
Yeah, and, and, well, beard's a different issue, but then, and then, you know, that, that I would see, so, but we have to come to some kind of agreement.
I, I completely agree, and I think, I think that that's the proper way to do it within that planning function, and like I said, they can, you know, meet all they want and advise us all they want.
But they only got to meet quarterly, I don't think monthly.
The problem that they got into, and to my mind, I saw this clearly, I don't think they agreed with me, but the problem that they got into when they identified like the ten properties or whatever it was on the list, when they were trying to spend down the money that we had from Green Acres, was that they didn't have the overview that we had, and therefore, they looked at things in a micro way, sort of on a property by property basis, and there were a lot of pitfalls with all those. Some of them were environmental, some of them were legal, some of them were this, that and the other thing. We, I think, would have been clued in a little bit more to what some of those pitfalls were and could have headed that up in the past.
But we didn't communicate that back to them.
Exactly.
Okay.
So, we need to be very active, they need to be active in our planning and budgeting session, and that's where the, a priority should be identified.
So, we, okay, that's fine. So, tomorrow night is, is a budget meeting, but we probably should do it at the next budget meeting. We should hold the budget meeting and put a specific half an hour aside for this discussion, so we come up with our priorities, unless you have time to do it tomorrow night.
Well, we could find the time, I mean, I'm not planning on...
I don't know how much you, I don't know how much you have to discuss tomorrow night.
Yeah, but I don't know.
If you have a two percent decrease in the taxes, we have plenty of time. If you're discussing anything else, we don't.
We have the capital budget to go through.
Yeah, we have the regular capital budget in that it would be really more, if everyone else is in a position, we'll be ready by tomorrow night to discuss their priorities.
So, but put this on there, you know, at the end of the agenda, say if we don't, if we have time, we'll do it, otherwise, we'll do it at the next budget meeting.
I think what we need to do is discuss tomorrow night the general priorities, and perhaps at the next meeting, will, we have a better idea which way we're going with grants and we may have an identification. One of the problems has been spending the money, which is why we have some money in the culverts now, is that Esses County has not let loose any proposals, you know, requested proposals, so they've been spending their own money themselves, and we're at the end of the road for transportation money, so no transportation money has flowed in yet. So, basically, you know, because we use that as a match, which is appropriate to leverage other money, if those opportunities don't come down the pike, it would be foolish for us to just spend the money. So, we've been letting it sit there and that's actually appropriate in my view, so that's just, you know, but in another month or so, we may, you know, some of these log jams may start breaking, who knows?
But, but we have a number of items that are in the capital budget, which would fall under the Open Space Trust Fund that we should talk about.
And we could spend the money on them if we wanted to. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Water sewer access estimate for Stone House, this is sort of like a micro item within actually this bigger territory, and that is Steve and Sal and I had a conversation shortly after the meeting that I missed because that was a substantive discussion about the Stone House where Steve Rother was directed to, you know, get a proposal on the street to auction the Stone House, and one of the questions that I had, because as we talked through what the utility access, as well as the, I'll just call it driveway access or driveway easement, transportation access, was what the realistic options for that were, I wanted to come back to the board and find out if the board would authorize the expenditure for our civil engineer to just do sort of a back of the envelope, what will it cost to provide that, because I think if we know what it costs, we have a little bit more information for the potential buyer for what it's going to be to make this property legal. If we just put it out there and, you know, say, we have to hook up the utilities and it has to, you know, get out to a street, you know, I think we were all shocked by the fact that the subdivision was going to cost us $25,000 and that's why we backed away from it, I mean, the associated with the police driveway. So, that was my request, and it's really a budget request, but I didn't know whether that was something that people were interested in doing or not.
Do you think it would make any difference to the end result?
Well, as I explained to Mr. Rother, my view is nobody's going to bid on this property and therefore, I have a longer view, and, and therefore, it would actually be helpful to us just to know, because ultimately, if we're going to try to make any use out of that house for village purposes, it would have to have utilities and therefore, we'd have to know what we were getting into. I don't see a viable option for this house, just continuing to neglect it, but I realize there's differing views on that as well.
That's failed so far, that path.
Which path?
The path of neglecting has now worked.
It's gone through a snowstorm, a hurricane.
You know, the problem, yeah, the problem is, it, it actually has worked with the exception of when historic trust says, oh, we're not going to give you money for Baird or we're not going to give you money for this place or whatever because you're neglecting that other one.
It's, 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 you know, it's, it's an unusual situation, and the house is historic, you know, has historic significance to it and, and size being old, but it's not the kind of project that, that a small town can take on. It's the kind of project that the state should be taking on, and, you know, the state should say, we recognize this house has an historic significance, and they should be taking it on, and yet, you know, they, they're not about to for a variety of reasons, but it doesn't have to be, they don't have to have access to it to have, to keep, to maintain that property and do what they should do, but maybe twenty years ago they were...
Well, the state, the state doesn't, the state doesn't do that except for their own properties, so, but I think the state would be happy to give us grants.
Maybe we should pass a resolution donating the property to the state then.
Well, they wouldn't accept it, I mean, no. I say that, but I feel confident in that provision.
Put a lot of donuts in there.
I'm just saying, I think the state would be happy to give us the grants. We were prevented from looking for grants for about the last five years, so we haven't really tested that there.
When we, when we looked for grants for the old Stone House, usually we're competing against grants that could be used for Village Hall, Baird Center, whatever it was, and that was always my objection to doing it when we were doing the Firehouse, is that we were just going to jeopardize grant money that we could get for one of our buildings that we really want to repair, and, and that's the fear, because there's only a limited amount of money in those pots, and when you start splitting it up, you wind up losing money for something else, for a project that you really want, which is, you know, again, what, what's the ultimate goal with the old Stone House? If, if you fix it up, what is the building going to be used for? And, you know, it's, it's like, it goes back to the same thing with here. We didn't fix up, if we, if we decide to move Village Hall someplace else, what do you do with this building? Nobody's been able to answer that question. So, nobody's been able to answer the question, what do you do with the old Stone House if you could afford to fix it? We don't have an answer.
And it would cost millions.
It doesn't make a difference. They can't answer the other question. Without having the other question answered first, there's no point in even trying anything.
Well, you know, maybe one of the things that should happen is to reform the committee of repurposing the Stone House.
Oh, gosh.
Because the committee that was formed was really a failure in that regard.
I nominate you to be the chair.
I don't know about that.
I don't believe this.
But the, the, the zero-sum attitude about, you know, we're going to jeopardize our grants for this versus that has not worked out in the, or has not been the case in, for instance, transportation or Green Acres, where we've been extremely successful and sometimes gotten grants for a couple of different projects, and we regularly submit competing grants, in other words, grants that compete with ourselves. We submit a grant for the River Project and we submit a grant for something else. We submit a grant for the river project and we submit a grant for something else, whatever. So I think, you know, I want to make sure that we continue what has been our very successful track record, so I'm not actually concerned about that at all.
But again, once, if we do get grant money to fix it up, that means we have to put in a match of money to actually make this work and then what do we do with the building?
I, it's a legitimate question. I'm just saying, it, it didn't get answered in that committee that was formed in 2007 because so many people were against spending any money on it that it, the goal became, "Let's just sell it."
I think it's, I think it's, I think, I think it's.
We're getting to the end of that road now.
I think, I think, I think people didn't want to spend money on it unless they knew it was an ultimate goal for what that house was going to be. So if you didn't have that ultimate goal and also that we, you know, we had priorities in front of it, so Village Hall, the Baird Center, the Firehouse.
Connet.
Connet, the library, skate house, the pond, whatever, those are all priorities in front of it in my mind. So it's like, so that thing, and I know that, you know, it becomes a self fulfilling prophecy that that building's just going to vanish one day and, and so I don't know how you handle it, but I said, the project is just way too big for this town to take on and, and not, because it's nothing more than a project of saving something for historic significance. It's the kind of thing that maybe a museum would take on if they wanted to do it or a, you know, some architect who's looking for.
Well, we'll find out if there are any takers because it's going to be a sale.
First we'll find out if there's any takers, otherwise it's ours.
That's, that's the best that he's found, that's the small problem. Finding access to the house is easy.
So what is the, what is the response to the idea of getting, of paying a civil engineer to get a back of the envelope for the water and sewer access?
What's the cost to them?
I don't know. Back of the envelope, something to cost that much.
The one, the one point I should, I should make is that if you're going to do that, it should, it doesn't do any good to just look at utilities. You should look at the entire access issue.
Isn't that, that's.
And the alternatives.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a pretty big project. You know, that's looking, that's looking at the driveway and the potential for getting around the 72-inch culvert. It's looking at the 25-foot access strip and all the costs associated with that, including shoring up the, the drive in the, in the retention ponds, etc. That's a big project.
You know, seven years ago, when I first sat down here, I couldn't believe that this discussion had been going on for decades and we had just spent millions of dollars and I recalled in my unpolitically correct response to this madness, "We need to crap or get off the pot."
You're still kidding.
This is, yes, and seven years later, I can't believe that we're doing this.
You actually lost me more than six years, but you actually have it just backwards. The one thing is you don't have to do, that's the problem, is we don't have to crap or get off the pot as you say.
This is insane. This is insane, you know.
Maybe Muffin wants to take it over and use that as the.
This is just insane.
Yeah, I remember back before, I mean, going back 10, 12 years ago, we actually had somebody who lived in South Orange Maplewood area who was one of the producers on this old house and said, "We look for projects that are 25,000, maybe 50,000 top." Then I spoke to someone else from a different TV show, says, "Absolutely not, this is just not the kind of project they want to do." And then so you start looking at, and you look at the local architects and you look for sweat equity, you look for all kinds of things and yet nobody could come up with an answer.
You have good institutional knowledge. I think that about seven years ago, we, they had just put in or were running out of significant money that was spent just to.
Shore it up.
Shore it up. How much was that dollar?
A lot of that came from a grant. I think like 150 came from a grant and we matched it or something like that, but it was.
50,000.
And, and that was spent to do what?
That was to shore it up for five years. We're in the six year and the five year plan there, so it's held up. It survived Hurricane Irene, Hurricane Sandy, it's passed snowstorm. It actually did much better than the five years.
You know, and I do respect the, the historical buildings and infrastructure that makes this town so great. For example, I was going to fight tooth and nail if we were going to get rid of this building.
But this is a viable building.
And that's the point. It's first of all, it's a branding. When you see this building, we got grants for the exterior, thank goodness the interior was not historical because it would have been a nightmare, so, you know, so it's cost effective to do that. But the stone wall, my suggestion is, if it's feasible, save the wall and put a plaque on it and be done, and get rid of the rest and be done with it.
You know, Deborah, this is something that was neglected for years, long before any of us were on the board, it goes back, you know, 10, 15 years, you know, before that and so.
I know, it's insanity.
I know, so now we're grappling with this decision because they didn't make a decision back then and now we can't make it and I would love to say.
I'd love to make it.
If nobody ever put it on the agenda again, I don't think I'd mind, but it's like, because there is no clean answer. I don't really want to spend any money on, on finding that answer because I don't, I don't know what the end game is, you know.
I would like to just, and I'm not even being facetious now, preserve the wall.
I understand.
And put a plaque on it about the history of it and be done with it.
That was the other committee, it was the demolition committee.
You're not going to be allowed to demolish the rest of the house and it's, and it's a misnomer, I don't know where this urban myth has come from, that there's just an historic wall and that the rest of it is not. And that the rest of it is not, does not have either historic integrity or historic significance. The whole house has historic significance, so.
But who will pay for that? Who will pay? In all seriousness, I can see just millions to get it to any sort of habitability, millions. And then there's the ongoing cost of retaining. We're dealing now with a, with a 2% cap and our costs that are outside of our control keep accelerating. That means the 58 or 68 cents for every dollar that goes to the school board that we have absolutely no control over mandated by a formula by the state and the percentage that goes to the county that we have no control over and the amount, the 28 cents per dollar that we do have control over to run the municipality, pay the salaries and stuff, you know, a significant part of that driver pensions and health costs which we have no control over.
I can tell, I can tell there's no consensus to get the back of the envelope.
Just don't want to spend the money.
Diverting money to a house.
Well, Deborah, no one's talking about diverting any money. This is all grant money that comes from outside, just like all of.
But we have to match it.
We match every one of our grants.
And then we pick up the liabilities, we pick up the utilities, I mean, there are tail costs involved in it.
Okay, it's just going to fall down, that's.
There's a more fundamental question though, what is the use? What is the proposed use?
That's why I said, that can't be determined. We'd have to form another committee to come up with a use because the initial committee did not come up with a use, instead they decided to try to sell it.
Because there's no.
So we'll try to sell it and then we'll see what happens.
Okay, sell it.
Okay, is there any, are there any more comments about this issue for tonight?
Okay, so that we could put the resolution on the agenda next, next time for, for the sale, is that, is that the consensus?
So we can everything.
Okay. Can I turn that projector on?
Are we done?
What have we given ready to do?
I got a couple of things. So the next discussion, which was supposed to be on the agenda here is the traffic light, Scotland Raymond discussion.
Could you put that on the jockey?
Okay, does that actually work with changing the slides?
It does.
Yeah, can I have that?
You have to aim it, the projector.
You guys, excuse me.
Want to go to the podium? That's okay.
You do it.
So these are just a couple of thoughts that I thought would maybe be easiest to visualize and then I, so we've been discussing this traffic light, potential traffic light at Scotland and Raymond for not as long as the old Stone House, not as long as trustee Rosner's term here on the board.
About a couple of years.
But sometime, told you I was going to.
Congratulations.
Yes, so it's been going on for a while, it's been going on for a while and.
Wait for the page down.
I think, yeah, I think, you know, when I was spending a little bit more time thinking about this and why it seemed like we were having some trouble coming to what we're going to do, is that perhaps the question was not really necessarily being framed the right way, at least in my mind, which was, the question was, "Should we put a traffic light here?" And really the question is two parts. One is how do we reduce, limit, mitigate, eliminate, in ideal world, speeding on Scotland? And second question is, how do we improve pedestrian safety? So I have a couple of thoughts up here, again, that I just thought would be best to visualize and then I have eight bullet points of what I would like to put in a resolution for next meeting of a plan to move forward. So I want to walk people through this. I'm kind of tired of this amorphous discussion we've been having, so I wanted to put a couple of things together. This is probably the worst PowerPoint presentation I've ever made, so don't judge me on it. Okay.
Oh, I can see that.
So this is just a picture of what they call bulbouts, which is the same thing as bumpouts. It's one of the things that I know the Transportation Advisory Committee has looked at some of these issues that I'm bringing up here. Again, these are just some of the thoughts that I had, that instead of putting them in notes, I wanted to put them up here. In this particular instance, this is the only slide that's not cited for some reason, all the other ones have citations, that excessive speeding, which is not speeding as one mile an hour over, but whatever they determine to be excessive speeding, usually 10 miles an hour, over the speed limit and over, and they reduce that from 86% of the excessive speeders that were on that road to down to 20%, which seemed to be significant. The other, so this first kind of section and a couple of pieces are about crosswalks and pedestrian safety. We talked about impavement, warning lights, LEDs, things like that.
Can I just interrupt? That wouldn't work during the daytime, why, what would that light?
Sorry?
Well, how would light happen in bright sunlight?
You can see it during daytime, I'll show you a slide with the lights on. So you can see it at night very easily, but you can also see it during the daytime. So I'll read the text up here, so there's one, the left side picture is the, is the LED warning lights and the right side is advanced yield marking, which basically means that instead of having the yields pedestrian signs on the crosswalk, you put it 10 or 15 or 20 feet in front of the crosswalk and those have been shown to reduce the incidence of what they call pedestrian vehicle conflicts. So by putting a sign further up ahead, and you can see, this doesn't have a laser pointer, does it? You can see in that, in their picture on the right, that the, that the bus has stopped where the sign is and everything, "Thank you." You know, that's, I think that's 115 meters in front of the actual crosswalk. So even if people are having trouble slowing down for the crosswalk, if the yield is 10, 15, 20, 30 feet in front of it, that gives you more distance for someone to actually stop before you get to the crosswalk.
Let me interject, we have signs on that road.
On the crosswalk.
No, but.
We have signs that say pedestrian crossing ahead, but we don't have the actual yields, the yield sign.
And nobody pays attention to it.
Right, the yield sign is in the crosswalk and what this design is suggesting is that all the yield signs and the paint on the road should not be in the crosswalk, but should be in front of the crosswalk. And in this particular one, first a significant reduction in pedestrian vehicle conflicts of 74%, 87% and 57% occurred at the three crosswalks that they tested, those are obviously extremely statistically significant. These are a couple of examples of the raised crosswalks. The one above is a raised lit crosswalk that's deactivated from Amherst, in the town of Amherst where I went to school, they basically replaced all their crosswalks around Amherst College with raised brick crosswalks that are very easily visible and they're actually raised up and they have, you see the posts on either side and you can hit the button and they light up. So you can see during the daytime on that one, on the bottom one, is that the lights are actually pretty bright, that's a daytime photo, you can actually see the lights being lit up and they're flashing, you can, you can actually see them. This is another example, daytime, where you can see the, the lights flashing and then a pedestrian kind of flashing light up top. And from this particular study, again, I'll provide this to anybody who wants it, all the citations are at the bottom, more than double the number of vehicles yielded when the crosswalk light was activated versus not. That's obviously incredibly significant, that twice the number of people stop when the lights are activated versus when they're not activated. This is just another example of raised crosswalks or what they tend to call pedestrian tables, which is instead of taking the crosswalk and doing that raised, you actually take the entire intersection, resurface it.
But isn't that a county, county road?
Right. So you take the entire intersection and you raise it with brick and with, you know, some other.
So they're going to do all of that, the county's going to do that?
No, definitely not. Maybe, this is kind of what we're talking about. And by the way, traffic lights cost between $300,000 and $500,000. So, so this is an example of taking this kind of one step further, again, the pedestrian table, which is the entire intersection being taken out, raised and put with a different surface. And the combination of a raised crosswalk with an overhead flasher increase the percentage of pedestrians for whom motor is yielded.
Okay, my, my other question here regarding that, what's the traffic volume where something like that exists?
If you click on that link, you can read the whole study.
No, I don't.
Some of these are major roads, some of them.
You, you put this together, so you should be able to answer my question.
I did, I can't tell you what the volume of traffic was in that road and it really, it really doesn't matter because all the studies with all of these were measured on roads of high volume and low volume and they specifically said in each of the studies that I looked at, that even on very high volume roads.
That was my question.
Which are probably even more high volume than Scotland, they're talking like double, like four lane like highways, lighted pedestrian crosswalks, raised crosswalks and pedestrian tables slowed traffic.
So this type of brick would be on a high volume road?
Yes. And there's a million different, there's literally a million different ways that you can design these. This is just another one, this text did not come out great, but this is something that's a little bit, it's not quite as raised, but you see the signage and bricks. In Massachusetts, drivers yielding pedestrians crossing at the raised devices went from approximately 10% yielding before these devices were installed to 55% yielding, so.
You have to slow down to be able to read the sign.
Right. So that's a five times increase in the number of people who yielded to pedestrians just by putting in brick in the crosswalk.
You must have been siffing when you put that one in.
Now, here are a couple of things. The top photos are crosswalks done well. The one on the left, the, the lighted component is actually in the Ballard on the side pointing to the crosswalk. The one in the middle is just a brick and stone crosswalk. The one on the right is lit entirely around. The ones in the bottom are the roads that we're talking about. This is Scotland and Raymond, which someone did mention last meeting that the lines were recently painted, that is totally not true, though you can barely see the lines, they're faded, there are sections of the road where the, where the paint, you can't even see the paint on the road, it's so faded. And so, and that is standing, you can see, I'm standing maybe, maybe 15 or 20 feet from the crosswalk and you can barely see it. The one on the right is Scotland and Terrell. Scotland, Terrell and a couple of other intersections where they're not full intersections, but they're T-intersections, don't even have crosswalks, don't have any signage, nothing at all, even though we do have the bumpouts in the corner of the road. So it is theoretically meant for people to cross the street, however, there is nothing there, even though there's even a break in the lanes. So that's something to note. So these are a couple quotes from some of the studies that looked at these. Previous research found that driver yielding percentages above 95% for the HAWK, which is this high intensive, whatever, HAWK is basically lit crosswalks treatment, even on major streets with multiple lanes or higher speeds. And then this is with the conclusions of their study, that was from the Department of Transportation. There was a 29% reduction in total crashes, there was a 69% reduction in pedestrian crashes and there was a 15% reduction in severe crashes. And those are all statistically significant at the 95% confidence interval. So those are all pretty conclusive in my mind, that there are studies that exist that show that there are some traffic control measures to improve pedestrian safety, raised crosswalks, different surfaces like brick, which we like to do anyway because they look great. We have them in other parts of town, on South Orange Jav, on Sloan Street, we do not have them on Scotland. And I think the overall takeaway that I want from here, and there's a few more slides, but the overall takeaway from this piece is that Scotland looks like a highway. It looks like nobody crosses the street, so people speed on it. If you had raised crosswalks, if you had all, every single intersection painted, raised with brick, and then basically what I would like to do is break up the crosswalks into raised with brick, and then basically what I would like to do is break up the crosswalks into primary and secondary. Primary being the high volume crosswalks like Raymond and Scotland, secondary being like Scotland and Terrell. And in the primary crosswalks, invest a little bit more into whether you're raising it or putting brick, or putting lights into them, or more signage, or whatever it is. And the secondary, get a little bit less treatment, because they're not quite as major, and there's a little bit less volume. But basically, again, when you look at that picture of Scotland, I mean, that does not look like a pedestrian-friendly road. Even, even South Orange Jav, we've gotten to the point where, I mean, if people remember South Orange Jav before the bumpouts, before the crosswalks, I mean, it was a highway. You couldn't even cross the street. And now it's not the easiest, but when you walk out into the crosswalk, you know, I actually find that people do, you have to be a little brave sometimes. But people do sometimes stop. Whereas in Scotland, I would not even step foot onto the street until I was confident that the cars were stopped.
Can I make a suggestion?
Uh huh.
Why don't we do the resolution with the traffic light that was proposed?
Can I finish the presentation?
Well, I asked you if I could make a suggestion, so.
Sure. But if you have a suggestion about what to do moving forward, I'd appreciate the opportunity to finish my presentation.
Okay.
Thank you. So the other, so this is something taken from the New York City Department of Transportation website. This is switching gears a little bit to a traffic light. Does a traffic signal control speed? No. In some areas where speeding is a problem, residents believe that a traffic signal is needed to address a speeding problem. In fact, traffic signals sometimes result in greater speeds as drivers accelerate to try and get through the signal before it turns red. Other traffic control measures such as speed humps, speed limit signs, and traffic enforcement are more effective at controlling speed. So, when we're talking about what we're going to do with this intersection and on Scotland, it is important to make sure that we are not using a traffic light to control speeding, because it will not do that. And anybody who thinks it does that is under a misconception, and that needs to be, we need to be on the same page about that. The only way that a traffic, series of traffic lights would control speed is if you had the traffic lights in a series like at every intersection, such that you were hitting a red, and you were hitting a red, and you were hitting a red, and you basically can't speed through. That's not the case. This is one light, and although it is a large distance between the two lights, if speeding is the issue, then the traffic light will not necessarily address that issue. Although it may address the pedestrian safety issue. But it's important to break those two things up. From the, from another Department of Transportation website, disadvantages of traffic signals. It says, "Traffic signals are not a solution for all traffic problems at intersections, and unwarranted signals can adversely affect the safety and efficiency of traffic by causing one or more of the following: excessive delay, increased traffic congestion, air pollution, and gasoline consumption, disobedience of the signal, increased use of less adequate streets to avoid traffic signals, and increased frequency of crashes, especially rare collisions, which is people speeding through the yellow or stopping at the yellow." Now, my main concern, aside from the absolute terror of someone driving down Raymond, seeing a yellow light, and hitting the gas to get through that intersection in time, is that a traffic light on Scotland could very well move a lot of traffic onto Vos. Because now you have that whole stretch of Vos that doesn't have any traffic light. All the traffic enforcement, all the focus is being put on Scotland, and Vos is just as open and is even more residential than Scotland is. So I think we have to seriously consider that a traffic control measure like a traffic light at that intersection would push a lot of people down to other side streets, and we may end up seeing adverse effects through that.
Before you make your, are you done?
So that's, I have these eight bullet points that I would like to say, but I'm done with those thoughts.
Before you make your suggestion, I did send an email to Dan Peterson, head of SOTAP, with the same observation based on looking at a couple of things on the traffic light and speeding. That traffic lights, when you have traffic lights spaced a long distance apart, it actually increases speeding on streets, doesn't decrease it for a variety of reasons. And it creates other issues as well as the traffic being diverted to other streets and so forth. And at the Public Planning and Zoning Committee, we basically recommend if they look at a lighted or raised crosswalk, and that's what we, that's what we felt would be at least a step that should be taken. And I still feel that way. And this just reinforces it. And I don't want to be, you know, I mean, the last time, some of the statements were made that if you don't vote for a traffic light, you're against safety in the neighborhood, which is totally the opposite. Trying to figure out the safest solution here. And I'm just not convinced that traffic light, one random traffic light on that whole street stretch is gonna help the problem. I think it's gonna actually change the problems. And in some cases, increase the speeding. So I personally would really like to see a real professional study done on the crosswalks with the brick crosswalks and the raised crosswalks all the way on Scotland for the whole distance. And if there is a cost to the town, and the county won't pick it up, which they should pick it up, or if they wouldn't pick it up, then I think it's something that we would have to consider in our roads, in our roads budget. But that doesn't bring immediate relief to the neighbors, which I still think, you know, immediately if we need to increase the enforcement. And that's, you know, that's, whether it's a short-term thing or not, but we need to figure out a way to increase enforcement on Scotland to the point even if we need a police officer there more often in the morning in addition to just the crossing guard, it's a route we have to take.
So that's one of the things that I had put into these recommendations. So let me run through these real quick. And I think this will give us a good starting point for moving forward. One, so there's eight points here. One is, when looking at this, we need to break the intersections and crosswalks into primary and secondary, and allocate, you know, a certain amount of resources to each one. This is not on the PowerPoint. Two is that primary crosswalks should receive a complete repainting and be built with brick and stone with additional signage, and ideally, if there's money for it, to be lit. Those are primary crosswalks, like Raymond and Scotland. This will start to create a road that looks more like a pedestrian-friendly road, a little bit less like a highway. On the secondary crosswalks, they should be repainted, and some of them painted for the first time ever, and placed with signage. And if we can afford for those to do the raised brick, I think we should. And I don't know if the lights are necessarily necessary on those. Again, this would create that whole corridor of Scotland Road looking like a pedestrian road that people are walking on and crossing, which it doesn't look like right now. And that perception is very important to drivers. Three is install even more signage on the roadway and painting on the road itself. So that doesn't necessarily mean more like yield to pedestrian signs on the side of the road, but it means painting on the road, something like that, advanced yield marker, where 10 or 15 or 20 or 30 feet in front of the crosswalk, you have something painted that says yield to pedestrians ahead with a line that is, you know, 15 feet in front of the crosswalk. Four is targeted enforcement on speeding, which could help bring immediate relief. And that we do that, and we do that very strategically. Work up a weekly schedule coinciding with the busiest times for rush hour and for visibility. And the reduction in speeding that we could accomplish through that would have a direct positive impact on the pedestrian safety, because it's a lot easier to yield to a pedestrian if you're going 25 or 30 miles an hour versus 45 or 50 miles an hour. And number five, a 100% no-tolerance crackdown on commercial vehicles that are excessively speeding over and over again. I've talked about this with the police chief and our council, and that what I would like to do, and this is immediate, is to get a letter of warning and notice out to all of the companies that have been identified as, you know, NJ Transit or any of these other ones that we've identified. You've provided us, John, with a lot of those. And basically send a letter to each of them and say, "This is your last warning. This week, we're going to be issuing warnings so that you understand how excessive your drivers are speeding. And the week after that, you'll be getting tickets, and, you know, and towed, and your drivers are just gonna be getting like hammered by our police department if you're not following the rules." And it's gonna be a complete crackdown on that. Number six is to explore the legal basis for creating a safe corridor, a speeding zone on Scotland Road, which basically means that if we are allowed to, and the county may have to do this themselves, but is installing on the north and south ends of Scotland Road, kind of the corridor that we're talking about, signs that say you are entering like a school zone, or kid's zone, or work zone, or safe speedings, or whatever the name is, along with the sign that says how fast you're going, along with a sign that says speeding fines are doubled for points and ticketing within this zone, which have also been shown to deter people from speeding. And that amount of money generated from that would actually allow us to afford to have the kind of enforcement that might be necessary to do that. Number seven is exploring the possibility of installing either a speeding camera quote-unquote or license plate reader on Scotland and Raymond. And although in New Jersey, you're not allowed to use cameras to actually do speed enforcement or traffic enforcement, what we could do is have the camera available and have signage that says this camera is a traffic safety camera, which just by people seeing that, I think they'll drive a little bit safer. And that will also assist us that when someone blows through a crosswalk, or, you know, the crossing guard says, "I saw the," you know, "What do you drive? A black Chrysler?" "Drive by really fast, and I couldn't get a license plate number." We just go back to the camera, look at the time, get the license plate number, and send the person a summons. And the word will start to get out that if you do speed through this intersection, even if there's not a police officer around, you might get a summons in the mail. And then number eight, kind of the last step, is give all of these things, which as far as I can tell have not actually been tried, even though they've been thought about and discussed, we haven't tried any of these things on this road, give them three months, or pick a timeline, say, "Okay, let's look at it now. Let's look at it after we've installed. We've repainted. We've done the crosswalks. We've done the lighting. We've done the signage. We've, you know, sent letters to the companies. And look at three months from now and see if the problem has been solved." And if the problem's been solved, we've done it without creating a situation that does come with significant disadvantages, although it also comes with advantages. And if that then doesn't work, then we have to move towards saying, "Okay, these things didn't work. We've improved pedestrian safety by some amount, because it will obviously help, but it's not enough. We need to go a step further. We need to put this light in. There is no other option." However, at this point, I don't feel we've exhausted all the other options. And considering the disadvantages that come with a traffic light, I don't think that it's the first thing that we should jump to. I think we should try all those other things first, some of which are at almost no cost, some of which are actually revenue positive, and some of which will take some outlay of money that hopefully we can work out with the county. So that's the plan. That's my plan.
I mean, the road project obviously would have to be done next year with the, you think, everything else, including painting the crosswalks.
The painting we could do right away.
And, you know, some of the things we do right away. So, you know, I tend to agree with you. I understand. I don't know, you know. I think most people agree with that.
I tend to agree that you can put some inhibitors or types of things in the roadway that notify people that they're speeding, such as rumble strips. And rumble strips are easy to paint onto the roadway as a quick understanding of the solution. I believe in bumpouts slowing down traffic. Putting in rumble strips, but it's, the problem is, is that people in the neighborhood don't like rumble strips. Because you hear noise. The same thing with the brick pavers. The brick pavers will make noise. You'll hear, it's like a rumble strip. Those are the kinds of solutions that you could do almost immediately. Tomorrow, you can go out and paint the rumble strips on, and see how it works if it slows down the traffic.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I think we should try a whole bunch of these things first before going to this huge, expensive, and thing that, A, won't solve the speeding problems and will probably make the speeding problems worse, because not only do people try and blast through the yellow lights, but when you're stopped at a light, when you didn't used to be stopped at a light, now you're gonna go a little bit faster because you just lost all that time sitting at the light.
Why can't you do both? The county's already committed to spending the money. It will not hit our budget.
Why don't we ask them to spend the money on solutions that could work and not have any of the disadvantages that the light has? If they have the money ready, let's go. I mean, basically, instead of them saying, "Well, we're gonna give you $400,000," or whatever it is for a traffic light, why don't they just say, "We've got $400,000 to improve traffic safety on Scotland Road," and...
They wouldn't give us the money. They would install the light themselves.
They could install it. That's fine. They could give it to us. They could install it. Doesn't matter. But if they have money that they think they can spend on this, why should we be required to go with a solution that, in my opinion, has not been fully thought through?
I'm playing that one.
Including the warrant analysis that was done by the county, which was a little superficial.
Can I jump in a little bit right now? The reason why the decision was made by the county is because a significant, and I'm playing devil's advocate now, a significant number of South Orange residents, out of their frustration with this problem existing for a tremendous amount of time and a discussion for well over a year or two, or longer, they came, they lobbied hard for a solution there, and part of their solution was the traffic light with the county. And the county said, you know, after they did, what was that study?
I'm not sure that's a correct statement, though, that they lobbied for a traffic light. They lobbied for things, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, in the audience, but I think they lobbied to have something done there.
And a study was done.
And a warrant analysis was done, and a traffic light was needed for part of the death.
That warrant analysis is normal.
Okay. All right, just let me just finish that. And then they agreed that they would be willing to make the investment and put the light in. So.
But the other options haven't been explored by the county.
Well, they've been explored, but it has haven't been, you know, I tend to, you know, the Transportation Advisory Committee, and I respect Dan very much, you know, he reviewed it and felt that a traffic signal would be the best solution for pedestrian safety, which was the number one concern, obviously. And, you know, which, and I think we need to look, like you said, at a much more overall picture. I'm just not really convinced that a traffic light will bring relief that some people are hoping it will bring, because, you know, based on other streets where we have traffic lights, I haven't noticed anything decrease in speeding or increase in pedestrian safety. You know, some of those streets may be.
Why don't we do both?
Well, you could eventually do both. But this is not a smart signal they were putting there. They were putting a simple signal there, so I don't think it's 400. I think it's probably closer to 250.
Alex, the reason that those things were probably not thought of, or perhaps thought of and rejected out of hand by the county is because, as I've pointed out many times, and asked our state representatives to tackle this with an amendment to the existing law, which was passed in 2004, is that traffic calming devices, or devices, any in-road devices that actually inhibit the flow of traffic on any street that has more than 3,500 annual average daily traffic, which Scotland Road clearly does, and which is not totally self-contained within a municipality, is unlawful. It's unlawful. You cannot do it in the state of New Jersey.
That's for speed bumps, not for...
No, it's not just for speed bumps. It's for traffic calming devices.
But you could do the crosswalks.
Yeah.
Well, you could probably repaint the crosswalk, and that would not be considered a traffic calming device. And that's the reason.
And you could do bumpouts also. That can't be correct, because we have, we have brick crosswalks on South Orange Jav.
She's saying you can't do it. You can't do a raised crosswalk.
Does not calm the traffic. A brick crosswalk is an aesthetic.
It's aesthetic.
An aesthetic treatment. An aesthetic treatment, which, except for the one mid-block that we have, is only at signalized intersections. So I know the law. I know exactly what I'm talking about. Any traffic calming device that is going to actually inhibit the speed of traffic is not going to be allowed without an amendment by the state legislature to the law that was passed in 2004, just like speed-oriented cameras are also illegal in New Jersey. So while I agree 100% with everything that you proposed, and I think that that would be not only the first step, but probably the way to go, the fact of the matter is, we have two problems. One is speeding, and one is crossing. And the only way, right now, given the law, that you're gonna get people crossing safely is by actually stopping the traffic.
Does the lighted crosswalk?
You know, I'll make my next campaign, you know, going to the legislature and actually getting a bill. There's a very poor amendment drafted right now that somebody sent us recently, which I just sent to both Steve Rother and Sal Randa. The language of the law, as it is this now prohibiting traffic calming. But it's not up to us to do these things. We, I mean, not only is it not our road jurisdictionally, but any of those traffic devices that are worth it, which are about half of what you put there, the, what I would describe as the non-paint, non-aesthetic treatments, they're not allowed. That's what we have to change in the state. That's what we have to change. And that's why we have a bad pedestrian safety problem in the state.
Right. Then, I mean, then let's make, I mean, let's fight for that change. There are a number of things that I think we can do in the short term, including painting the crosswalks. They're not even painted right now.
But the lighted crosswalk, that's not a traffic calming device.
I don't know whether it is or not.
And I can tell you, I know places where they are used on that kind of a road, in Ocean County. I mean, I...
If they're not activated, in fact, they don't inhibit traffic physically in any way, other than the lights warning someone that there is someone in the crosswalk.
I wanna cross. You push the button, the lights go on. You cross, the lights go off.
And I have to say, just from personal experience, which I tried to stray away from here and tried to stick to what studies I could find and some of the statistics, but the town that I went to college in had three colleges in one town, unbelievably busy and congested traffic problems, a lot of speeding, a lot of college-age drivers speeding. And they had these lighted crosswalks that worked unbelievably well.
Did you stop?
Yes. Absolutely, absolutely. When you see someone, they walk in there and they hit the button, and all the lights start flashing, you, in your mind, you don't have any plausible deniability left to go through that intersection. And let's say you get pulled over. What excuse do you have at that point? "I didn't see the person." Well, there was 16 LEDs flashing lights that you could see from a mile away. "Sorry, you get the ticket." So, you know, I think there's, and I think that goes along with some of the enforcement. I would love to put up a camera. Again, it's not issuing speeding violations by camera, but a camera that's saying, "We're watching this intersection, and if you blow through this crosswalk and the crossing guard says, 'Stop, we're going to get your license plate off here, and we're gonna issue you a summons.'"
You can't do that. It's the same thing.
Let's do it.
I know you can do that.
Somebody that can sign the summons. You have the proof of the license.
Let's make sure with DOT that a lighted crosswalk is acceptable on a, on a over 3,500 ADT.
I will follow up with that.
They already told me what that we could do. We could do the lighted crosswalk. We can't do a raised crosswalk, which is like a speed hump.
Yeah. You clearly can't do that.
And you can't do the tables, the...
Can you do rumble strips?
Rumble strips, and that's true. I mean, most residents.
Rumble strips don't stop anything.
But the lighted crosswalks, the brick paver crosswalks, those are all, those are all things we could do. And, and, you know, maybe they should be done in addition, you know, all the way up and down Scotland Avenue, but I just, Scotland Road. But I also feel that, you know, having the one traffic light's not gonna be enough to, to deal with the speeding issue.
Well, it's gotta be, it's either gotta be a pedestrian-activated light or it's gotta be a light. Because otherwise, the cars are not gonna stop and you're not gonna solve the crossing problem, which is what you have.
What about bump outs?
So, why don't, you know, let's make sure that we can do a, a lighted crosswalk. And the other states and policies and studies that, you know, many of which I'm very familiar with, New York City DOT, New York City doesn't have a law like that. Massachusetts doesn't have a law like that. We are very, very backward and windshield-oriented in New Jersey.
Well, let me ask a crazy question for an elected official I ask at a public meeting. But, so you, so it's unlawful to put something like this in. Would the county do it?
No.
No. Why would they do that?
Who, who, who is, I mean, let me, let me ask you a crazy question. So, so there is...
Because D O T approves it.
But, but there are, so there are all these traffic control measures that the majority of the country uses on a regular basis that have been deemed safe and effective, yet for some reason, New Jersey, as they are in a number of areas, are far behind. Let's build it. What's gonna happen? They're gonna undo it? They're gonna arrest us?
Some sort of dysfunctionality.
I mean, I, but I'm saying, I mean, you know, if, if the law, if the law is this backwards and there's no possibility of advocacy, which I would love to explore a little bit more, then like, I, you know, that's too bad for the state. We've gotta go out there. Our job is to keep our residents safe. And if their laws are preventing us from doing that, it's our obligation as elected officials in this town to take a stand and say, well, you know what? Too bad for you guys. We're going to install the raised crosswalk. You can bring your bulldozer down here and take it out if you want to.
And I'll be right behind you.
I mean, I'm just sick of being limited by statutes outside of our control for us to be effective government officials. And if this is one of the areas where there is consensus in most of the country about what's right, yet New Jersey, for some reason, doesn't understand it, it's time for them to understand it. And if we have to play nice and do the advocacy route, I'm all about that. I love doing that on all these other issues. But if that doesn't work, I would love to look at what it would be like to just do it and just see what happens. And you know what? South Orange doing that and saying, we're going to install a pedestrian table because we know it's gonna create a safer crosswalk, and it does. And they try and, you know, come down on us in some way. All that's gonna do is bring media attention to an issue that deserves media attention, which is, hey, by the way, our state statutes about how we control traffic in this state are really outdated and antiquated. And this one town took it upon theirselves to do the right thing.
I'll draft a resolution for the next meeting.
I will draft a resolution with some of the points that I brought up tonight excluding the last one.
I said, I'll draft a resolution for the next meeting.
I may draft one, too. Hopefully, they're the same.
But you should, since she is a subject matter expert in traffic...
I don't think you'd get arrested for it.
Mr. President, since she's a subject matter expert in traffic, even, who would even do that?
Let me send to you the points that I brought up tonight. And if you can incorporate them into that resolution, that would make me feel better about some of the time that I spent putting these different points together.
Okay. If I can get my Google email. No problem.
Trustee, is, is this statute prohibiting such calming devices related in any way to the speed limit on that road? Because here, we've got a 25 mile an hour road, they're doing 50.
It's only volume.
It's only volume.
It's volume and it has to be self-contained.
And outside of the community.
And, and just so you know, this was, uh, this was lobbied through the legislature by the County Engineers Trade Association back in 2004.
So let, let me ask you a question. I mean, it's a slight side note, Trustee Bauer, but what, what do you think is the reason for them not, who does this benefit to keep some of these things antiquated since they're on?
Well, it's not considered antiquated if you're a traffic engineer. We have a very congested state with a lot of drivers and a lot of cars and not much road space. And so, uh, people who want to do things like slow down the traffic seriously impede traffic flow and, and getting from A to B during rush hour. So, um, the, you know, I don't wanna say a policy decision has been made to favor cars over pedestrians, but the fact of the matter is, as we all know, and as I say many times here, uh, New Jersey has about double the rate of pedestrian-involved fatalities in traffic accidents as the rest of the country. Now, one of the reasons for that is because we don't obey the law very much and in other places, they do actually stop for pedestrians. So if we were, for instance, like in Philadelphia or California or someplace like that, where drivers actually stop for pedestrians, we wouldn't need this law. We wouldn't need to get rid of the law. I mean, it would basically be a non-issue. But where you have a situation where cars don't obey the law and they drive too fast, drivers drive too fast, then you take into, uh, then you revise your streetscape to give drivers a physical signal like traffic calming devices do, whether they're on the more aesthetic end or the more regulatory end, like, you know, bump outs and speed tables and so on and so forth. And that makes the driver slow down.
Doesn't this fall into the initiative that you're part of, what's it called, Safe Streets or...
Complete Streets.
Complete Streets.
Sort of.
Sort of?
But DOT, DOT is very much behind Complete Streets, but DOT is not knocking on the legislature's door to change this law. And that's what we really need to do.
Well, maybe, maybe we need to make a few phone calls because, you know, at the end of the day, you know, it's, it's amazing the amount of money and focus that is put into personal vehicle transportation in the state, where public transportation and pedestrian and bicycle transportation, I wouldn't say is ignored, but is given, I mean, you know this better than any of us up here, is very short-changed.
Yep.
And this is one example of that. You know what? Cars should be slowed down because people should be encouraged to use other forms to get around. But if you get to have drive, you know, on a highway everywhere and you get to, you know, drive as fast as you want with no, you know, enforcement and no crosswalks and no stop signs and pedestrians don't matter, yeah, I'd keep driving, too. But if that's more difficult, maybe you think about taking the bus. Or maybe you think about taking the train. Or maybe you think about carpooling.
They speed too.
Hmm?
They speed too.
Well, but, right, but the buses speeding at least is a somewhat more manageable problem. Because they're a little bit bigger, you can find them a little easier, you go to New Jersey Transit.
And they ignore you.
Well, yeah, we'll see about this one.
If it is a county road, can we ask the sheriff to stake out the road for issuing summonses?
We could. I don't know if they will, but we could. We can definitely ask. And we, we could probably get them to help us out, um, to augment some of our police doing that.
Instead of sitting and getting pizza, they can sit on Scotland Road.
But I would love to look at, is it possible to break this corridor and say, if you get a speeding ticket within this corridor, you get double the number of points on your license and double the fines?
Now, those exist. I know of several, I mean, what the criteria of the law is.
That would, I would, you know, maybe I need to have a nice chat with DOT Commissioner and talk about that a little bit more.
But you, you talk, in the meantime, for immediate relief, you're talking to the police chief about increasing enforcement.
Yes.
That's important.
And the sheriff.
Immediate.
Yeah, and we'll reach out to the county and see if they can help us with that a little bit.
And you'll discuss with Sal about painting the crosswalks up and down.
Every intersection getting painted.
What?
County paints it well.
Well, look.
Well, we can paint it as well.
If, if they, if the county won't paint it, we'll go paint it. We'll get a painting.
What the county...
You can't talk from there.
What the county doesn't, we already have public comments. That's, that's in two more weeks. The county, what the county doesn't know doesn't hurt them, right? If we paint them.
So, so those are just some of the discussions. It sounds like we wanna bring a resolution for the next meeting. I do wanna make sure we can get some feedback from the public. So, John, you look like you're the first one up.
I mean, obviously, you touched on...
Name for the record.
Okay, yes, sorry. John Samaro, 179 Scotland Road. I'm living here for nine years and lived with this issue for nine years and was very surprised to see a speed limit of 25 and, you know, wake up one day and have somebody on my front lawn, wake up another day and somebody's in my neighbor's bushes, wake up another day and somebody's in my driveway. So it's, you know, it's, it's kind of, you know, pretty obvious that we've got a problem. So, three administrations ago, I came to speak to Bill Calabrese, then I came to speak to Doug Newman, and now I'm speaking to you. So, glad to see that we're moving this forward and just can't believe it's taken all this effort, time, hours, personal sacrifice to get something done about this issue. And I recognize that some of my neighbors are objecting to the installation of a traffic light, but I do wanna mention a couple of things that, you brought up really good points. Everything that you put on there, we as the West Montrous Neighborhood Association submitted that to the South Orange Transportation Advisory Board, whatever Dan, whatever that board is that Dan chairs, and sent him everything, from tree planting to finishing the electric gas lamps that were supposed to be put on Scotland Road 10 years ago, never happened. You know, there's a ton of things that can be done to cove the street. If you look at historical pictures of Scotland Road from 1904, you'll see that it was a coved, tree-lined street which slowed the pace down. And you have something that closes it in, people slow down. So Dan's, he had a number of recommendations. He said, yes, if you put a bunch of gas lamps in, if you plant trees, all these things will slow people down. We do have those two issues that you mentioned. We do have a speeding issue and a safety crosswalking issue. Couple of things I wanted to let you know that, you know, from the first meeting that we had with the Calabrese administration, we did talk about the fact that, and we did include the people on Vos Avenue, and it was a very well-attended meeting by all residents on both streets. We were very concerned that if something was done on Scotland, it would push the issue to Vos. We also lobbied for Vos Avenue, all of the primary intersections, meaning Raymond and Vos and Meaden-Vos, which are the crossing to, or all fields and everything be made into two, two, three-way stops, full stops, breaks the flow. No need for traffic signal, you put up the stop signs. We met with complete, um, just really roadblocks. And I don't know what the, I guess, you know, this is something for my own level of frustration. I just don't understand why this village, why the elected officials in this village, why the engineer that works for this village, why everyone that is supposed to do a job, it's paid for by the taxpayers of this village, does not do anything to help the situation. We've got kids that cross Vos Avenue at Meaden every day to go play basketball or go to the middle school or walk over to Marshall School or whatever it is. There is no crossing guard there, yet people blow through that intersection and don't really give a care that there's kids. They don't care. And we've just been really damn lucky that no one's gotten killed on that street. So, yes, we're gonna push the issue over to Vos Avenue. And yes, we've asked for Vos Avenue to be taken into consideration. And we get blocked. It's very simple. What's it gonna cost you to put up two stop signs at two different intersections, break the flow and watch and see how fast? It makes it a lot safer. So if you do end up needing to put a stop sign, a traffic light up in Scotland and you, or you do all these other mitigation steps that you wanna take, and it does push it over to Vos Avenue, there are methods and steps that you can take. And it doesn't require a, you know, a brain surgeon to figure out what will work. So from that point of view, that's there. The one thing I wanted to let you know, and this is, you know, this is coming from living, walking, um, and just, you know, just, you're living on Scotland Road. None of you live there. You have absolutely no idea what you're talking about. You can't go sit out there for a half hour and know what you're talking about. You've gotta live on the street. You've gotta be walking a baby carriage. You've gotta try to cross the street with a baby carriage or a wagon with two kids in it. Or, you know, let's just say you're walking your son to school. Well, the intersection that we're talking about at Raymond in Scotland, the road is extremely old. So the, going towards the village, the road bends. And you can look and say, there's nobody coming. And you'll go walk into the middle of the intersection and right damn in the middle of the intersection, here comes somebody flying around the corner. And you're in the middle of the intersection, ready. And either they're gonna stop or you're gonna run out of their way, had it happened. So, you know, I understand that we, nobody really wants traffic light, me included. But I also don't, I wanna be able to cross the street safely. Now, you've got a crossing guard out there that has a whistle, a sign, a stick sign that sits out there, which is a request and a second one for both directions because even though it's double-sided, the people coming from in from Orange don't see it fast enough for him to get them to stop. So there's a lot of things that you mentioned up there. I agree with all the things that you would like to do. However, we've gotta do something and we've gotta stop sitting back and just saying, ah, we're lucky this year. Why is it that when the Neighborhood Association does a barbecue and we have to move people from one side of Scotland to the other side of Scotland, I have to request the police to put out a trailer that says speed limit's 25, to put out a stick sign at multiple locations to get people to be able to cross their families to a barbecue on a Sunday? It's unbelievable. I mean, you guys have no idea what goes on, on the street. You've gotta live there to understand it. It takes me sometimes seven minutes to pull out of my driveway in the morning. I sit there and I watch back and forth and back and forth. And once in a while, somebody actually stops to give me a break to pull out. So the volume's very heavy. We've got a lot of unenforceable laws that are on the books that nobody enforces. You're right, the police department, you know, the manpower. Do I wanna see the police really? I do want them out there, but, you know, if someone's gonna get mugged at the train station because they're out on Scotland Road, I want them looking at what's going on at the train station. Everyone in the neighborhood is in agreement. We understand what the, what the game is. We understand the financial obligations. You know, I'm just, you know, myself, as the president of the West Montrous Neighborhood Association, we're asking that as a representation of the 800 houses and the multiple buildings that are in this area, that you do something to mitigate speeding, to mitigate, to make it safer for the kids to cross. And if it means that the county says to put in a traffic light and you wanna have a discussion with the county to see if they'll think of other things, certainly go ahead and do that. But you're all you're gonna do is delay the inevitable, which is installation of the traffic light. That's what's gonna happen. I think the county has been more than, and I don't even know the word, but they've been extremely patient with us because they could've just done this anytime they want. They really don't wanna just shove it down our throats, you know. And I voted for the traffic light because I looked at it from, okay, I'm gonna have the queuing trucks and the buses. I'm 180 feet off the intersection. It's gonna happen. You know, I know it's gonna happen. But I also don't wanna get caught in the middle of the intersection like it's happened to me at least twice with my son walking into school because somebody's flying down the street doing 50 in a 25. If people know they can do that, they'll continue doing that. If they start getting tickets, and I mean tickets, not just warnings, then maybe the message will get out there. But this is prevalent and an issue with inside the whole town. Nobody thinks they're ever gonna get pulled over by the South Orange Police Department. As far as the county, county has said numerous times, they would send out the county police off the mountain to come and patrol the street and start giving out tickets. And when that message gets to the police department, suddenly, we get a speed detail. And the problem that Alex really is, is that if you put enforcement out there, it's not sustainable. You've gotta come up with remedies that are permanent remedies. The things that we're talking about, anything you guys can come up with, we've said, your speed is radar, solar detection, to do them all over the state. Why we can't spend $10,000, put one in each direction, give people an idea of, hey, you're doing 50, it's 25, it lights people's heads up. It does make people actually hit the brink of it, you know. So, yes, I agree. Crosswalks all the way through, absolutely. You know, whatever you can do, help us out. But in the end, you know, I don't know what the answer's really gonna be. All I know is it can't stay as it is because, you know, we're just, we're, I'm borrowing time right now. You know, I keep telling you guys, I've been to how many meetings and said, we're at 36, you know, kids. Nine years ago, there was one. 36, you, you know the numbers, 20% enrollment increase in the schools. So, that's about all I have to say. I, I don't know what to tell you guys. I mean, you're gonna, you know, try to come up with a resolution, try to see what you wanna do with that resolution. I would encourage you to please have your conversations with the county ASAP. Get your information together. Please definitely include us into these conversations. More than happy, I mean, Dana had to leave. She couldn't stay. She's opposed to the light. I told her, I will let you know what you said. Because even though we're on two sides of coin here, we live on the same block. I still, she is a resident, she is my neighbor, and I still want her to know what's going on with this. And I know that she really doesn't want this. Yes, it's gonna be at her corner. I get that. I do have a comment about one other thing that you mentioned tonight. It's a totally different topic. Can I say it?
Uh, if it's really quick.
Yeah, real quick. Schools. Um, trustee Davis Ford mentioned about the amount of money that we're spending taxes. Now, everyone knows, and I'm gonna just say this for public knowledge, for public consumption, we all know that we've got a illegal student population in the school system. You went, you knew it. Everyone that lives in these two towns knows that we've got kids that go to these schools. And if you wanna talk about the 20% increase in enrollment just in the grammar schools, but yet how are we gonna plug, plug it up? The first thing that really needs to be dealt with is that you, as the elected board of this town, and Make Wood, as the elected board of that town, need to get together and force the Board of Trustees, the Board of Education, to really actually look at the issue. Because it's prevalent, not just in the high school, not just in the middle school, but also in the grammar schools. See it every day. It's obvious. It's, you don't have to be a brain surgeon to know that there's people that are using our schools that don't live here. And if it's 60% of my taxes and that's gonna force me eventually to sell and leave, then we need to address the issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Yep, just coming up. George Mathias, 219 South Orange Avenue, apartment 501, South Orange. I would like to also back up my neighbor and let you know that my concern is also speeding. The area is South Orange Avenue, Scotland Road, and Irvington Avenue. And I do agree that painting... is South Orange Avenue, Scotland Road, and Irvington Avenue. And I do agree that painting and maybe additional signage is necessary because a lot of the crosswalks haven't been painted in years and years. And even way before Hurricane Sandy even came to the scene, I called the county myself, and I said, "You need to paint the crosswalks on Irvington Avenue, the side streets like Cottage, Prospect, South Orange Avenue." They said, "Well, we'll get to it next spring." So hopefully, maybe this spring we'll get some action. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to comment?
Is it general or only on the track?
This is the last time to comment tonight, so.
On anything.
Yeah.
Anything, yeah.
I just had a quick comment.
Your name for the record.
Oh, Michael Jensen.
Where do you live?
257 Worwick Avenue. Just a quick comment on the old stone house. May I suggest that the Parking Authority offices moved there? They seem to know a lot about construction and be willing to spend a lot of money on, for those things. I'm just kidding. You know, I was here two weeks ago and addressed the concern of all the parents, and I think that from what I heard today, the comments, you know, I'm kind of a little bit depressed about how the town looks at child safety here. I mean, we have, we have this issue now with the Barrett Center Parking Authority. We had a strong commitment from the town to stop construction, and today they're painting again, fumes around kids. Need I say more? Right? And at the same time, you're discussing a parking light for how many, how many decades? That's obvious the best for the children. I mean, I wouldn't even allow my kids to cross that, that street until they're driving across that street. It, it's nuts there. So I'm really concerned about it. So, but obviously, my main focus right now is this parking company and what we can do about it. And I have to say that, you know, I left a meeting that we've had last time with the reassurance that we wouldn't initiate any new construction. If they're needed, finish up a little molding or something, you know, we were okay with that because I understand the contracts have to make a living. But starting painting obviously must be, that's new construction in my mind. I mean, that's a new phase of construction. So I feel that the concerns is not really heard. The town isn't really communicating internally. And every time I ask somebody for a clear answer, I'm always getting the finger pointing. The Barrett Center Director is pointing at the Parking Authority Director. Parking Authority Director is not really being too responsive, but he's pointing to Village Hall. Somebody in this chain of command must make the decisions, and somebody must have the power to say, "No more. Let's get this right before we continue." And I'm not seeing that. So hopefully, we can get that resolved. Hopefully, we can include the parents again so we don't have another issue where we walk our kids to school and find that now the town's made a new decision to impact us. You know, let's, let's try to work together on this subject. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak this time? Okay, seeing as there are no more members of the public who wishes to speak, I'd like to close public comments. And I do have a couple of comments. I'll kind of go in reverse order here. As far as the Barrett Parking Authority issue, I did send out an update a couple of days ago to all the parents about what we were doing. And what you saw today with the painting was a miscommunication where basically someone was under the impression that painting was not part of construction. As of today, all work, everything has been stopped, so there won't be anything more. As far as the fumes and things like that go, not even a concern at all. The paint is actually called Breathe Safe Paint. There is no chemicals in it. It's completely safe for breathing in while you're painting. There's no license, you know, everything is licensed, certified the way they did it. I mean, there's absolutely zero issues between the painting and the room and the children being next door. 100%. And the communication piece, I think we've admitted, should have been better from the beginning. People should have been notified from the beginning. This was going to be happening. We would have had the discussion a while ago. There's no doubt about that. We've admitted that and think that, you know, next time anything like that happens, we do have to do that. But again, you know, I gave a guarantee to the parents that I spoke to and, you know, a brief update that I sent out with our administrator, that no decisions will be made until more communication happens. That's 100%. You know, I apologize if it seemed as though something different was happening because there was painting happening this morning. Our Parking Authority Director was extremely ill for about a week and was out, and so if there was some lack of responsiveness, I would assume that that's why. I know he's started to catch up and contact people today. But, you know, although it may seem that, you know, again, things are happening, moving, and we're not, you know, addressing, definitely not the case. Like I've told to a few people, you know, the decision, any decision is not going to be made in a day because we want to make sure that this decision is 100% ironclad. We examined every possible option. We are doing the best thing possible. We've not missed anything. So it's not going to be a quick decision. It's going to be a careful one, and that maybe means it's going to take a couple of weeks. But again, at least in this particular case, everything, painting, everything, everything has been stopped in that space until we figure out what we're doing. Going back a little bit to the school with taxes, I don't want to get too into this, but in my personal opinion at least, John, what you brought up is just not happening. It's just not an issue. It's not causing taxpayer money. I've spoken to this with the Board of Education in the Board of Ed meetings when they actually did a study where they re-registered students that I believe actually ended up costing more than they ended up saving. And I've spoken with the superintendent personally about that. I did go to Columbia High School. I went to all of our public schools. And yeah, there were some kids that were from out of town, but not that many. And again, I mean, I don't want to claim anything that they've done, but if you have, I don't know if you've seen the reports that they've issued about this, but I would definitely ask Brian Osborne for those reports. When I saw them, I had the same concern as you did, where it's basically like, "Well, maybe this is, you know, more of a significant issue than I thought it was when I was there. Maybe I knew kids who I thought lived in South Orange and didn't even live here." And when that report came out to me, it was clear in my mind that that wasn't an issue. So I would definitely recommend, you know, taking a look through that. Again, just my own personal opinion.
How would he get that report?
I would assume it's on the Board of Education website. If not, you'd definitely contact the Board of Education or Brian Osborne's office directly, and I'm sure they would give it to you. It was all presented in a public Board of Ed or Board of School Estimate meeting. And I believe, you know, Trustee Levinson, I know you were there, but that I believe that what they ended up determining was that it did end up costing more to do that entire re-registration process than they saved by the number of students they found that weren't going to the school.
No, they are doing re-registration as well, as they have a truant officer, as well as we supply them with names and addresses, which they verify.
Right.
There's a return mail process that they have.
They've got a lot of pieces in place to prevent what you're talking about, you know? And as far as I can tell, and as far as we can tell from the Board of School Estimate side, they take it pretty seriously. But, you know, unfortunately, it's not going to be the kind of thing where it's like, "Well, they're going to find it and say, 'Okay, well, we had 100 students who didn't go here. Now we can reduce the budget, you know, 10%." And I don't think that's going to, as nice as that would be, I don't think that's going to end up happening.
It may be another scenario that parents are divorced or whatever, and the, one parent lives in town, pays taxes or whatever, and another parent lives in a town nearby, and the student may spend most of the time with the parent out of town. So people see that going, but because that person, parent who lives in town is a taxpayer, they have the right to send their child. So that may create more of an impression that kids are coming in from the outside. But I do know a couple of families where this exists. Parents divorced, one parent moved out, and one parent stayed and the children...
Well, they have the guardianship. They have relatives who live in town. They declare guardianship. It becomes a very big problem.
Yeah.
But, you know...
And that's where you see the back and forth.
And it's something, I mean, you know, we're very odd, you know, in our structure that we have an elected Board of Education in this Board of School Estimate, the only school district in the state, I'm sure you know, that has this. So not to say that you should only go speak to them about it, but, I mean, they are, they are really supposed to be the ones that are working on these policies. And, you know, we definitely are in contact with them. A little disappointed unless we had a schedule mix-up. They weren't here to present their budget tonight, but...
Hopefully, you'll get them back.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, we definitely have to do that.
So we can have them on the record here.
Yes. And so a couple of other things back to the street was, I did live off Scotland for about nine years on Terrell, just a couple of houses up. And I actually walked to school every day off Raymond and Scotland when I went to South Orange Middle. So I know how bad that road was, and every day I would, there was a different crossing guard when I was there. And every day I was not, crossing guard was a little, you know, she didn't want to quite step into the road either. And I, you know, I remember all of that, you know, quite clearly because that was every day. And then when I finally, you know, big day comes and you get your driver's license, and I try and, for the first time, make that turn from Raymond onto Scotland, making a left, going up, I was like, "Oh, my God, how am I supposed to do this?" So, you know, I've lived through all that personally, too. And it is difficult, but I think, you know, the lack of action that you feel like has happened, and I don't want to comment on what people have or haven't done in the past, but we have a resolution that will be on our next meeting, two weeks from now, that will not be a resolution, you know, saying, "Yeah, let's do some traffic safety." It's going to be the steps that we're going to take. It's going to be, we're going to paint the lines. It's going to be, we're going to do targeted enforcement. It's going to be the things that are going to happen in the immediate, in the short term, medium, and long term. That's going to be in next meeting. So I know it's been, you know, and this is an issue you've been intimately involved in for a while, and I think all of us appreciate the energy and feedback that you've been able to give to us on this, but we are coming to a head with making a decision, and it's going to be two weeks from now.
And we'll be working with our representative, who's our liaison from the county, Frank Del Guardio. He's also the risk manager for the County of Essex. So as you're putting this together, and Janine, you know him quite well, I think that it would be prudent to make sure that we engage with him in the process of putting this resolution together.
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to have some conversations with the county and definitely with the DOT as well. I'm kind of curious to hear their justification for not allowing raised crosswalks to help improve pedestrian safety. Anyway, is there any new business? That was the last discussion item. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Trustee Rosner, seconded by Levinson. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Yep.